Good evening, everyone. It's our meeting's microphone. I'm obsessed with starting meetings on time, so anyway, thanks for being here. And welcome to the May 15th, 2019, meeting of the Imperial Beach Council and the City Clerk. First, you got others who saw your cell phones and bring them on top. We're in the meeting and meeting conversations outside the chambers. The City Clerk has the announcement.
If you want here to speak on the public comments, a particular item on the agenda, please fill out a request to speak form. It's a blue card there in the back. And when you're finished with it, please turn it into the Deputy City Clerk's. Stand here. Thank you.
Mayor, please take the role.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Councilmember Spitz?
Here.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Here.
Mayor Potem Patton?
Here.
Mayor DeDino?
Now, I'd like to invite other councilors. So, Scott, Pac, 866, the list of what you live in.
Scott, Saliva?
Invite everyone else. Please, you're right ahead of me, huh?
Mr. Scott, allow case. Right, again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. And now, we will invite councilmembers to speak, starting with Councilmember West.
Uh, this is a council meeting. It was really just all airport focused on the second airport meeting, May 9th. I spoke at the Tru School graduation, which is a the Tru School Construction Management's three projects that have been going on since 1969. Our airport's had it for 20 years. It's how we, it's taking people who want to find different ways to get involved on large construction projects. There are some really interesting great projects that go on throughout the country. And our airport's been doing it up to 20 years. So, I'd like some little preparation about it. We'll start after later. And then on the Thursday, we have our committee and our board team. We finalized our last round of transportation out-of-meeting. So, the board, the results of our committee will be moved to the board on June 6th.
Yes, I had a meeting with a member of JBA out of last week. Nothing major, took place about a week. And we are working, I'm working very hard as Chair of the Coastal Cities Group to organize a meeting with counties, coastal counties, to present our main concerns as coastal communities to the Coastal Commission in the hope that we can reconcile some of the areas where there's a lot of dispute and litigation and contention over, so that the essentially the mission gives a little bit more leeway to local communities for, to carry out their local plans and to develop local coastal plans in accordance with the wishes of the community and the needs of the community, not necessarily dictated to by the Coastal Commission. So, I will be traveling to Northern California on the, in July to be one of the representatives in the meeting with the Coastal Commission at the workshop on July 12th. And prior to that, I'll be traveling next month to my past as a, as a member of the County Committee on Developmental Policy for the Northern California Cities as well. So, I will disclose those in the next City Council agenda.
Okay, so, May 9th, I attended the MTS Board meeting. We are going to begin a very important process. There was a, a survey that was conducted that I mentioned a couple of meetings ago. The survey, people had interest in a ballot measure for next year to improve transit. And if had a woman who support, it was about 67% of support for a ballot measure. Uh, something I found, I found out recently is that Info Beach has one of the highest unemployment rates in the county, up 45%. And I consulted as an economics professor and looking for that, it's because of lack of access to public transportation or because the jobs are very much in the North County area. You can see in this map, the yellow area, where all the, you know, the, that those are concentrated in, so the accessibility of jobs is, is, is challenging. So, I think that now with this new ballot measure, we're gonna, we're gonna have an opportunity to speak out and ask for what Info Beach wants to improve public transit so that we can have more access to jobs, so that we can have, uh, more access to education plans. So, they are convening a community outreach working group made up of different community groups throughout different cities and throughout the county. But I think most importantly for us, I would like to schedule a meeting, a community outreach meeting with all of you to find out what does Info Beach want in the, in public transit, so that I can see that information directly from the community and pass it on to the board. So, we are looking to schedule a meeting on June 13th at Bike Road from 6:00 to 7:00. And we'll be sending out more details about that. And please let us know if you have, uh, any further information about that. And Robert?
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hall? Pretty great. As many of these citizens, residents know, Info did their own part in cleaning up this recently. And I was just wondering, is there any way that the city can send our thanks to Info? There are hundreds of workers and I'm just curious if they can send our thanks by giving them a contract. But I'd like to know, if we can find out, how many tons lighter ideas? Because there were so many trash jobs. Raise your hand if you went to the cleanup. Did anybody go? Seriously? Oh, there you go. I went twice. Okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Oh, wait, one more thing, sorry. But on June 5th, I report to speaking the class of 2019 graduates on where this is. So, it's an exciting.
Great, thanks, Senator. Last week, meeting the Sand Act, the Sand Act Board, really, Sand Act's been talking about its regional transportation plan and these five big moves that the agency wants to take to really have a more efficient and cost-effective transportation system that moves people around the county to division centers, job centers, et cetera. And so, that's really gonna be the new agenda. They'll be here, they've asked to come and adjust the council, so that's something we can expect. And then, on June, from June 6th to 8th, I was invited to the Northern American Mayor Summit in Southern Baja. And we've got mayors from Canada, the United States, and Mexico, including the Mayor of San Diego, Kevin Packer, and the Mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti, and mayors from around the region. And it'll be great, the Foreign Minister of Mexico, who's the lead on the city, will be there, as well as the President of Mexico. So, hopefully, it should be a good opportunity to get and talk about issues obviously affecting us. We have 15 million gallons spilled over the weekend. We have more rain on the way. Our region's closed today, unfortunate. Apparently, it smelled on Monday, according to one guy at Cirque Wood and, you know, those , those, plenty around the, the coast here. South swell, the rest of it on Friday, so we've got roping south swell all week, there's a lifeguard smell, and, and Mr. West knows. So, anyway, and I do know that too much, so maybe I could tell. So, anyway, that's, that's it. And now, we have a presentation, please stop. Great. Are these all the speakers? We'll start with Ray Alcala. Ray, we followed by Dante Pemisone. Here you go. Lynn Westard, Lisa Twonness, and Mr. Smith. I never saw her. Go ahead, any, yeah, sorry. And it's three minutes.
Good evening. I have a question for the council about accessory drone maintenance on drop rate. I am really, uh, slash, garage work, it's been a little bit.
We can't, we can't respond to your comment, but definitely that's something that the city manager can follow up with you, or I know that's an issue that we're thinking. Thank you so much.
Do you have the contact of the officials? I should put my email there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. You have a cover there. Dante, Pemisone?
Good evening, Councilmember West. I just wanted to make two comments. Regarding the first comment is the ACOM study that was presented to the residents of Imperial Beach a few years ago. For the record, you guys discussed that, that it was a very seriously flawed study and it was a foundation for our local plan. And I just wanted to make that a record, that that ACOM plan was very flawed. So, that's the first, first comment I have. Second comment is regarding rate control and housing affordability in Imperial Beach. As a realtor and as a committee member on our Association of Realtors, I was keeping an eye on what's going on with City San Diego for rate control and housing, so just wanted to appreciate that.
Thank you, Senator. Hi, Karen. Here again, followed by Lynn Westard.
Hey, I'm Karen, I'm from, 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 I'm gonna read this one, that way it's, it's different. So, we wanted to express our concerns about the new law allowing sidewalk vendors in college spaces. And as a small, long-established business located in the heart of ID, we're very concerned about the, how this rule will impact our business. Our main concern is associated with how the rules will be enforced. We know that you're establishing the rules, which is great, or at least modifying what we already have, but we're concerned about how we're gonna be enforced. So, if ID takes a firm stand and does not allow illegitimate, non-licensed, non-permitting sidewalk vendors, it will be important to lessen the negative path created by opportunities to the very businesses. People already come into Portland Plaza area and sell their wares of ice chests and push carts and all kinds of things. And these are not permitted businesses. Under the new passing of this law, we may see a carnival-type atmosphere, solicitors passing through, which is already happening in other parts of the city and other locations like Dabo Park and Seaport Village and places like that. With regard to enforcement, when illegitimate sidewalk vendors show up, we have asked the lifeguards to manage the situation. Our understanding is that the Sheriff's Department and the lifeguards can speak to them and manage them. This typically happens during very busy weekends and events when these organizations are already busy. We don't like to ask them to walk away from safety issues and come and handle this kind of situation, but that may be our only choice. When, when one illegitimate vendor is allowed to get away with that, manual help. We also think that it should be clear to any enforcement members, such as the Sheriff, lifeguards, security guards, or any other that are managing this, that they provided, that they be providing clear information about which areas are often extirpating by sidewalk vendors. This can help to alleviate confusion for everyone. Perhaps a map would be helpful to the community in this regard. I wanted to say thank you to the Sheriff and the Forest San Diego and the City Council and Andy, and the lifeguards, and all the other concerned business owners for their support.
Thank you so much for getting, for communicating. I know that we immediately, we give, when you have the concerns to the city manager, I know we'll follow up on it, but I think that's something you may have to address at the next city council meeting to get a copy on how we plan to enforce that. So, I've seen one of the vendors in question that I know you're concerned about, so thank you so much for bringing that up. Lynn Westard?
I'm super shy, it's very scary for me to be here until like half hour, I've written my name.
Well, thank you so much.
I need to speak on the Blue Way development. I love the idea that's very pretty. I'm really, really concerned about the parking again because of the beach are homely, Bayside Miami Parking has now gone up Cala and up Fifth, and we're walking across the street and there's no parking. They proposed 106 spaces, but if you do the math, 47 hotel rooms, eight 47 apart, 51 residential homes, there aren't even a lot of 51 cars for residential. Everybody knows that residential homes usually should have two or more cars. So, they're unallowing for maybe 102 for residential area. They also should have at least 15 or 14, and they're also putting in commercial property retail stores, so that's accommodate maybe 20 customers. That's 184 parking spots. And I know this is coming to City Council, although I love the idea, but I think it's time for Imperial Beach to start relooking at that zoning laws and zoning and helmets parking, because we're trying to encourage people to drive bikes and enjoy Imperial Beach by being desperate in the bicycles. But with that many people trying to drive around and finding parking, I'd be very afraid to go down Palm Avenue now. And that's usually why I quote shortcuts to the beach. So, I just wanted to mention that, because it's also an excuse which shows, you know, it's gonna bring up the Airbnb, which means people staying there, inviting their friends to come see them or staying there. I didn't even factor in those things. So, 106 spaces is less than a plan, 184 is realistic.
Thank you so much. Lisa Thomas?
Well, let's cut back to both. Good evening, Council, city staff, and members of our community. To those of you who don't know, my name is Lisa Thomas. I'm currently performing a collision shop here in Imperial Beach. The reason that I came here today is, I actually want to commend the city staff for their, this incredible responsibility. I mean, if ours had, anything that I've ever had the pleasures of dealing with when it comes to, and I don't think that I have the recognition, that we deserve. So, that's all. I just want to thank you. And my, my, my.
Um, this is it.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm here since 2008. I was a 704, I didn't, 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 I
I will tell Councilman Berg theory, the best way you can tell NTS is run a bus after midnight. Run a charlie after midnight. So an adult can live in the gas pump downtown. They haven't done it since ninety-two. It's the same problem. Um, in terms of dealing with the postal commission, without any imagination, we could easily designate a regional sediment management group, we could take charge of it. The outlet of the river's cars is in their plan. We could control all the rivers, all the coastal canyons and make all the decisions ourselves, but we have no imagination. We'd rather retreat. Southeast seacoast is a living hybrid doom. I'm working on a presentation on that now. I've taken pictures through the course of April and May. There's been creative sand at south seacoast to the tune of seven or eight feet. With this south trending ocean and the lateral swell movement, we will see sand. Contrary to all the impounding that all the groups of ours have done, we will see sand this summer. It won't be polluted. And if it rains heavy like this going to, we'll find the city to debris too, and that'll be a catastrophe. Thank you. Uh, can I reuse my, uh, plastic bag from my fifth piece of paper?
Thank you.
I'm also in the Grand Chicago library. Our project is, we actually asked, even we had their first, it was for people librarians. These people librarians from county that are brought together that belong to or work with directly in our community. So that's about eight of us, um, put together and talk about things that are happening. The things I wanted to show us more about is we all know that this happened in two thousand and twenty since this pandemic in April. For those of you who don't know, it's all online. And, uh, Imperial Beach is not, you know, the most computer literate town, but I wanted to show the libraries aware of that. And the county library is trying to get grants, we did kiosks there along the staff to help people. Imperial Beach apparently has one of the highest, um, not reporting census numbers. They said it's a hundred percent, but that doesn't really count how it works and what capacity that they said out of the county library. And probably out of city academies. So we're bound to determine to the only thing else about everybody is we can usually have your number and all others will be happy. Um, second thing, a little bragging, uh, some other statistics that were thrown out. We actually have an online high school program for diploma program. People who want to do a high school diploma or who are eighteen years or older, it is free. And they're available to our town. It's an online program. We currently have seventeen people who graduated the last year with it. We have forty-seven people enrolled in it right now. Five of which are right here in Imperial Beach County, uh, academy as well. And last month, we still, we have, I think, uh, twenty graduates this year. Uh, sixteen more people that started it, I'd be playing that, this is a whole, whole year, not a set of, uh, half year. So I'm excited to get back to it. So a little bragging and state of the census is coming up and the county will be very hard, um, to hear what you guys and make sure we feel happy at the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we do have some here to do a PowerPoint presentation. And now we have presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, you want to say something?
I was on a point, and also we're gonna have Lieutenant Greenwald on. So, as you know, um, Lieutenant, um, Trent McGonagall has moved to back the headquarters. And we have a new lieutenant in town, so we wanted to introduce him to everybody. So this is our station commander, and this is Lieutenant Trent Greenwald. I think he, he says he likes to go by anything, but I think he likes to be called Ted. So I just wanted to introduce Ted to the council, the staff and to the residents of my community. So we welcome the board.
Welcome.
Having talked to Ted, served an ID for a long time. You know this community, like, actually it was an introductory course, uh, ID, like, in detail. So, uh, it's really good to have an ID local, uh, working out of the service department. So, anyway, thank you very much. Um, and now we have, um, item one point one, um, and that's a venue of very presentation. Why, you know, you can work any place, you know.
Thank you for having me. Hello, I'm Amy Sane, and I represent the San Diego County Fair. And I'm glad to share, I will live here, stay with you. Our theme this year is book for the law. So calm down, you'll grow with me for the next, let's take a, we'll break our issues and let's explore the fair.
There's absolutely no place like the San Diego County Fair. Join Dorothy and her famous friends Pearl Magic with a amazing adventure, eight thirty years from July fourth. We call it the San Diego County Fair.
So this year, everything is totally awesome at the fair. Um, and we will be going from May thirty-first through July twelfth this year, so that's the one fair season. And the fair is involved in the community all year round. We feature a banner program in twenty-three communities with nearly a thousand banners. And the banners include local people and community businesses, so it's totally awesome. I don't think ID is participating in our program, so hopefully I can get in touch with one of you. And we can run any questions. And we love to connect with all the youth. Uh, we have several programs. Uh, we visit local schools to teach kids about how to grow and eat their own veggies. With our plant growth program, then we also provide local field trips, um, so our kids can explore and experience their minds. So now back to the fairgrounds. So we have a fabulous lineup of festivals this year. So our coast to the coast wine festival will be held on June eighth. The San Diego International Beer Festival from June fourteenth through sixteenth, ladies and gentlemen. And Spirit and Hot Town Festival on June eleventh second. Oh, and don't forget to find our hidden secret zoo for some sneaky, sneaky hot nails. And our Asian and Pacific Islander Festival on June fifteenth will be for popular food, entertainment, martial arts and local non-profit organizations. Also, our Out at the Fair Festival on June first is an awesome celebration of our M D B T Q plus community. And our concert lineup this year includes Mr. Worldwide Pickle, Tony Pete, Smokey Robinson, Lady Sterling and many more. And then, of course, there's the food. And this year we'll have the heart and crack sliders, yellow brick flesh, lizard elabs, frozen flat chocolate, flying monkey karma horn, deep fried grunder egg, deep fried monachristini sandwiches. And, um, we really do have a fun food. So thank you so much for skipping down the y'all's work room with me for a while. And you've been awesome, ID, and I look forward to seeing all of you at the San Diego County Fair.
Be nice. I want another one. I'll call you later. He's the most magical place for all my career, you know. And so we get an amazing adventure, the scareful spot alive, and the two woods of physicality, which is like totally awesome. It puts basically, I said, for all.
Thirty-two dollars for twenty-seven.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Now we have item one point two, um, this is the, uh, New US Census Bureau, uh, the word of us, thanks so much.
Hi, uh, good afternoon. It's my pleasure to be here today. Uh, so it was preempted, uh, here by a colleague from the library, uh, who are preparing for the twenty twenty census. Uh, so I'm here today, really excited, uh, to present to all of you today, the notion of, uh, about the twenty twenty census. Uh, my name is White Alexia, I'm a resident of the US Census Bureau, and today I'm talking to you all, you know, and power. So my job is to make sure that we want everyone, we want them in the right place. And the reason why the U S is, because it is mandated by the U S Constitution. The U S Constitution indicates that there has to be a headcount of everyone living in the United States every ten years. That includes people of all ages, races, ethnicities, citizens and non-citizens. But first census was invented in seventeen ninety, and one has been invented every ten years since then. And why does it matter? Uh, why do we need to know population totals? Well, I can tell you that this information is critical because it determines how many seats each state has in the House of Representatives. The federal government distributes eight hundred and eighty-three million dollars every year. Those are your taxes, my taxes. Uh, California receives roughly a hundred and fifteen million dollars every year. Uh, states also use this information to withdraw congressional and school districts. Uh, and you might be wondering, well, I'm very confident that there's a lot of money. Uh, where does it go? Uh, here you can see a few examples of some of the programs and the allocations that we receive. As you can see, health, uh, receives a lot of funding, um, medicated in their town. Uh, there's also funding for students, uh, so you can reach higher education. Uh, there's federal direct student loans, uh, there's also federal, uh, health grant programs. Uh, also, we like to live in X community, so there's obviously, uh, money for highway construction and planning. Uh, and here you can also see that there's other assistance, uh, for local families, uh, there will be section made or even a supplemental material assistance program. And what does this mean, uh, for us here locally? What does it mean for Imperial Beach? Uh, well, I can tell you that in twenty-ten, the US Census Bureau funded twenty-six thousand residents living in this community. Uh, the San Diego Association of Governments, SADAC, is forecasted to be by twenty-twenty, the population of this community will be twenty-nine thousand residents. Uh, so in ten years, this community has grown by three thousand people. And honestly, as a San Diego mayor, that place grows every small. I think this community continues to thrive, continues to grow, and we have to have an accurate account, a full and accurate account of this community to make sure that this community receives its fair share of funding, uh, in order, again, for it to continue to grow and continue to develop. In twenty-ten, the US Census Bureau, uh, pretty much, uh, indicated that in this community, only seventy percent of the population actively participated in, in the twenty-second census. Uh, that meant that us as an organization, that we have to draw and look out for almost nine thousand Imperial Beach, uh, residents. And obviously, that is really bad news because we also understand that some people might be undercoming, uh, meaning that people will not be part of the census. If current trends continue, currently we're estimating that roughly two hundred and four people will be missed in this community. And you might be thinking, well, that's small, right? Only two hundred people out of almost thirty thousand? Well, I can tell you this is really bad news because for every Imperial Beach resident that is not coming, for every California resident that is not coming, it brings up to two thousand dollars per person, per year for the next ten years. So this small number really translates into almost four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next ten years. If you multiply this by ten, that's four million dollars additionally that could be coming to this community. But only if there's a full and accurate account. Uh, in Imperial Beach alone, there's, uh, roughly, uh, two hard count census tracts. And essentially, a hard count census tract is one where the participation rate is lower than seventy percent. Uh, here you can see a quick snapshot of this community. Uh, this is the tool that we're using to show us, uh, geographically, geographic and map areas that are difficult to count. Uh, here you can see that the deepest and blue are the, are the most difficult to count. And as you can see, Imperial Beach in itself, uh, is, is a blue community, meaning that it's difficult to count. Uh, and a hard count census tract usually has a hard count population. Here you can see a few examples of some of those communities. And there's different challenges, different issues, why these communities don't actively participate in the census. Uh, some of them might not speak English very well. Uh, some of them might not know that the census is happening. Uh, we understand that a political climate that is a little tense, so there is a mistrust in government. However, I do want to bring your attention to the top, uh, population there, which is seven hundred five. This population continues to be the most difficult to count, not only in San Diego County, but across the nation. And we will be doing that a service to ourselves, if we will put some effort and make sure that we count these individuals, because we certainly are a lot of the funding goes towards health, uh, towards youth health and education. So how can we work together? How can we make sure that there's a full and accurate account here in, in Imperial Beach? Well, I can tell you for one that I'm here as a representative from the US Census Bureau. At any point, you can contact me, you can text me, I'll make sure to be a massive to you. However, I'm gonna show you here a few ways, uh, that, that we are actively being proactive, uh, to make sure there's a full and accurate account, and then also a few ways that the city can also be, uh, a participant in this effort. Um, so here are a few examples of how we're working to make sure that, that there's a full and accurate account. Uh, we're using technology to make sure that we're identifying places that are more, uh, difficult to count. Uh, we're also working with the cities to make sure that we have inaccurate, that we have inaccurate, um, addresses for every resident living in the city. Also, um, one of the biggest changes that we will see in twenty-twenty is that it'll be the first time that the census, uh, can be taken online. Uh, so we're asking people to take the census questionnaire to the comfort of the home in your computer, uh, or on the smart device. We will also have call centers that will support thirteen languages, including English, uh, for anyone that would like to take the census questionnaire in that manner. Uh, then people do not self-respond either to the internet or to the phone option, uh, then at that point, we will send out the traditional paper form that most people are used to seeing. And if all else fails, then at that point, we will send out a numerator, uh, which will go and knock on someone's door and conduct an in-person survey. Uh, here's a quick timeline of the, uh, census questionnaire and how it will arrive. Essentially, everyone is going to be receiving a postcard that is going to have a unique link to your household, as well as a phone number that people can call, uh, either to view the census questionnaire or if they have any questions. Uh, we will do our due diligence and send up to three generators in order for people to self-respond. And as of today, April first, twenty-twenty is designated as census day. So we hope that everyone can take the census either on that day or in the months, uh, that, uh, come after that. Um, so here you can see that, uh, we will, uh, start, uh, sending out the numerators or people actually to go knock on people's doors on or after, uh, April, uh, February. Uh, furthermore, uh, us as an institution, we want to make sure that we're taking confidentiality very, very seriously. Uh, so all of the information is protected. Uh, as soon as you fill out the census questionnaire, we take all that information off public record and any other, uh, online service to make sure that it's se- securely safe on our servers. Um, so I want to make sure that everyone understands that we will never provide information, specifically individual information, if you were to, um, uh, uh, a informant, an enforcement agency like the FBI or even immigration services agency like ICE, everything that we publish as the Census Bureau is strictly in a statistical format. Also, um, how can you help, uh, to make sure that there's a full and accurate account? Uh, as I say, uh, if you as elected officials and staff who work with organizations, whether it be churches or non-profit organizations or other institutions or civic leaders that work with hard count populations, please let us know. We're than happy to, uh, work with them and start a dialogue about how we can work together. Also, you can incorporate census messaging into current events or current, uh, activities that are happening. Uh, so for example, in the future, I hope that either in twenty-twenty or later in twenty-nineteen, if this body can make a clear message and say, hey, guys, just a quick reminder, the census is happening, uh, please make sure you fill it out, that would be very helpful. Um, we want to make sure that we're leveraging this existing infrastructure and resources. As, uh, the colleague mentioned, for the library, we're already working with the library system to make sure, uh, that we're creating census action kiosks at key locations where people can safely securely take the census questionnaire. And lastly, if it makes sense for this body to initiate a resolution and take it a step further, uh, to say that yes, you will be supporting the census effort in, in different ways, I'm than happy, uh, to support that effort and allow us to create the guidance. Uh, also, we are hiring. Uh, we are opening new offices here locally in San Diego County, uh, looking to hire, uh, to three thousand people. Uh, here you can see a few examples of some of the jobs and how much they pay. Uh, most of these jobs are also work from home, so people don't necessarily have to report, uh, directly to an office every day. Um, so I hope that you can share this resource, uh, with your networks. Uh, the last thing I want to say about hiring is that the application process is very easy. Uh, it takes about ten minutes, people do not need a resume or reference contacts. Also, I want to mention that there's a, there's a large number of partners that are currently working, uh, in the census effort. Uh, here you can see a few of them, uh, and I do want to highlight, uh, SADAC because SADAC is currently the fiscal agent for one point five million dollars specifically for the census effort. So we are working with the city of Imperial Beach, uh, specifically, uh, with a few members of the timing department. Uh, I can mention, uh, Reyna Ayala has been, uh, very helpful in this effort. So we hope that we can bring dollars to Imperial Beach, again, to support the census effort. Um, so with that said, I want to say thank you for your time. And hopefully we can find you to make sure that we count everyone in Imperial Beach. And if you guys have any questions, uh, I'll here have a few minutes, uh, to answer any questions you can have.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia, for that excellent, thorough presentation. We appreciate it. Other question, this is for us.
Is, um, Mr. Garcia, is there anyone who can, who can have this PowerPoint and put it on our city website so we can get that for people?
Yes, uh, most definitely has been provided, uh, to the city park, uh, so the park has that information. Uh, also, on that, uh, note, uh, we have a bullet plate, uh, the city's can use, put on the website, uh, to inform people about resources, what is the census, how can they participate so that, uh, it's very visible and that you remember, so that access.
Perfect. Great. That's perfect. And then one more question. Um, you, you mentioned, uh, do you have any bullet plate language for city support? Like, uh, so you can get that to every city and, because I, obviously, we want to make sure that our people are getting, I mean, deemed counted. So do you have bullet plate, or is it, looks like a shitty resolution, or are you gonna put together on that?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, and we also understand that, uh, each city can, um, can, can work at the level of the nature that they want to be involved in. Uh, so our ask at this point is really to allow us to give this presentation to other community groups, whether it be tiny groups, uh, neighborhood council groups, uh, other places where we can spread this message. Uh, so, so yeah, we, we do have all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I think, um, buried within your presentation is, to my view, uh, the key to getting our participation up, and that is the confidentiality aspect of the census. Uh, we're a border city. We have a lot of border patrol that play in here, as well as the general concerns of, uh, of a community which has about half of its population, uh, indigenous Spanish, Latino, uh, Latino. So, um, in order for us to really be able to, I think, message to the mindshare of our community, uh, who we need to participate in order to get the resources that you mentioned, there has to be an assurance of confidentiality. So I, I would think that the messaging we want to do would emphasize that probably at the top, uh, or near the top of, of the messages. If possible, follow up on my colleague's question that, uh, you've already prepared something along those lines? Or do we need to sort of extract it and, and meld ourselves?
Uh, so if I present the question correctly, uh, the question is, uh, how can the US Census Bureau, um, confirm by or affirm that everyone's, uh, information will be, uh, confidential? Uh, so we do have, uh, again, uh, several examples of how we do that, uh, and we're than happy to provide it. Uh, in the, uh, bureau's history, in the last fifty years, there has never been an instance where we have provided, uh, any individuals', uh, information. Again, uh, either as an enforcement or integration, uh, everything we do is specifically for primary purposes. Um, so we want to make sure that if the city is growing, right, and if there is more children in the city, there are more schools, more schools built. Uh, earlier, right, we were, we were figuring about, we were listening, right, about some of the concerns that people are having about new developments that are happening. Um, so again, we want to make sure that the community, uh, is going towards transportation, right, for proper roads, uh, in, in different, um, uh, funding sources. So, uh, yes, so to answer your question, uh, we take confidentiality very, very seriously and we never distribute that information to, uh, to harm anyone. Uh, and, and the other point was, um, obviously, there is a large Latino population in this community, so we have to build trust. Um, so also, we would like, uh, assistance, right? Uh, whether it be connected to local nonprofits or local civic leaders, uh, that, that work with this population to make sure that they understand, uh, how the census is going to impact them, but then also understand how the census is not going to impact them.
My question is regarding the renters. Uh, I want to mention, we're also a little long of the normal language. We have a very high turnover rate because we have a very, uh, high population of renters. And we have also population of that, like with other guys, Spanish, like that.
Oh, wow, it's really.
So are they getting prepared? And, and what's the strategy to ensure that you have those, that people's language when you knock on their door?
Uh, so if I present the question correctly, is, uh, how is the US Census Bureau preparing, uh, to deal with a high, uh, number of renters and homeless individuals to speak other, another language other than English? Uh, well, what I can tell you is that, um, here, right, are providing you the information. Uh, we want to make sure that we're hiring locally, uh, so that if people do go out, uh, and, and do that in-person survey, we want to make sure that they look like them, uh, in instances that they speak the same language as well. Um, so what I can tell you is that we are hiring, uh, people that speak multiple languages. I myself speak Spanish. Uh, I have another, uh, community member, sorry, I have another colleague here from the US Census Bureau that speaks the other. Um, so we want to make sure that we are, uh, being represented, not only in the community. community, but being able to talk to them. Uh, all of us are locally here in San Diego, so we understand to a certain extent, uh, you know, politics or the regional demographics. Um, so again, also, this is a call to you to help us, uh, because we can't do everything. Um, so, you know, I showed you the link, I showed you the job, so I hope that you can share that, uh, with some of your contacts. The other thing that I want to say here is that, uh, we are currently working, uh, with United Way, who is also a fiscal agent for one point five million dollars. Uh, and there's a coalition of about one hundred organizations, uh, that work at different levels of the community. Uh, and they do have also, uh, different language experts. Uh, I can tell you for sure that, you know, obviously there's Spanish, uh, there's Chinese, Korean, Fadalo, uh, not, maybe not here, but in areas of of San Diego, with, uh, art, uh, comedy, Arabic, and Latin East communities. So we want to make sure, again, that we're that we're providing the right, uh, information to our populations through the network.
Yeah, and I just mentioned the Russian people, the the demographics ten years ago might not be what they are today. It might be a totally different demographic.
Most definitely. Uh, the other thing that I'd direct it to you is that, uh, we're fully two, we're trying to make alliances, uh, with, uh, realtors, uh, with affordable housing developers, uh, people that, uh, own, uh, communities to make sure that we're hosting, uh, fewer events uh or even national sessions at those communities and to distribute information to those people uh currently.
Now, we sort of opened up, uh, a number of areas and, uh, here, uh, some of the straightforward responses. Um, this is all in the context of of, uh, moves at the political level to, uh, put citizenship on the census. That's been litigated. And y'all, those of us who are paying attention in these cases, you know that, you know, what the consequences of that might be in terms of suppressing, uh, the census in certain areas like ours. Um, but there are reasons for that being litigated, reasons why it's been put on or there's enough to put it on the census plan. And those reasons suggest that it's, at least in the minds of, in my mind, that the confidentiality issue may be compromised. Why have the question on there if other depart parts of the government aren't interested in those responses? So what what would you say for that?
Uh, so I could definitely answer that in in three ways. Uh, first and foremost is that from the US Census Bureau perspective, we want to make sure that there's a hundred percent participation rate everywhere. Because at the end of the day, the census is the main, the backbone of our democracy. If people are not counted, then we're not represented, whether it be Congress, whether it be local city government. Uh, and and lastly, funding, right, like, we're not giving that funding yet. So from our standpoint, we want to make sure that everyone participates, that everyone tells us as many questions as they can, uh, on the census questionnaire. Uh, second, uh, you're correct, uh, the uh citizenship question, uh, is pending as currently uh being, uh, discussed at the Supreme Court level. Uh, we hope to have an answer, uh, from the Supreme Court by the summary. Um, so at this point, uh, we, as the Census Bureau, we're preparing, uh, the census questionnaire to have a citizenship question and not to have a citizenship question. So we have both options already on the table. Uh, at this point, we're just raised for, uh, the Supreme Court to be the decision. Uh, and lastly, um, you know, again, to, uh, to answer the question about confidentiality, so everyone's information is protected by Title thirteen. Uh, it is on the Constitution. Um, so in in our history, there has never been an instance, again, where we have shared personal information, uh, from an individual, uh, to any government agency. What I can tell you also is that most people give more information to get a credit card into the US Census Bureau. More people give more information to get a phone activated into the US Census Bureau. We're asking for very simple questions, very simple information. Uh, should be about ten questions, uh, ten minutes of their time, uh, to answer that questionnaire. Um, so again, we want to make sure that you understand that confidentiality is of utmost importance to our organization and we will never, never, ever share any personal identifiable information with any government agency.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. My dad worked for the census. We were lucky to suddenly start him doing memories. He's at home asking questions in Spanish, his bad Spanish, um, so that was instructive to me. Um, so we're big supporters of the census. Um, I attended a launch, I think, of that community-based initiative, uh, I think brought on by the county, um, in southeast San Diego last year. So it was really good to see that. The the efforts we made, the multi-linual and multicultural and underserved outreach, lots of community-based organizations throughout the county. So actually, very impressed, folks from the state census, uh, obviously statewide offices. So, uh, from Los Angeles, so that was really impressive. Maybe we can do a vaccination, the next council meeting, and then maybe have a discussion or the staff can update us on how we can help the city, um, your outreach. I think the issue of outreach for us is really critical because those neighborhoods that the census, um, isn't being represented, there's a local decision rate, are areas that we need to meet today tomorrow and are most underserved areas while we're trying to address them. So we really appreciate the presentation, the excellent, uh, answers that you provided and the discussion, so I hope you can do that for us possibly.
Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay. Here we have, um, I have point three, and that's a presentation. Boy, my favorite thing, census and public works. This is awesome. This is super great. Um, and a presentation, vaccination recognition, national public work, and, um, so I will read this and then represent that, uh, council sector at one point. So this is a vaccination for National Public Works Week, not on a team, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital and important to sustainable and resilient communities and in public health, high quality of life in all being of the people of California. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees in the state and local governments and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities in central par cities. So, uh, I gave this all that, uh, hi, sir, the dean and our city council. Uh, you hereby designate me on May nineteenth to twenty fifth as National Public Works Week.
We really appreciate your work. All of your.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
You know, um, I I really do appreciate, you know, when you come, when you come here and as as a member, you really do see the inner workings of the city. And it's really about focused on building things and fixing things, and if we had more money, we'd even do more. So that's what we're talking about tonight, but, um, what is instructive for me is that when you see the amount of works, for example, San Onofre system, and then you see the collapsing sewer system in Mexico, what you realize is that this the responsibility and time and effort it takes to manage public works and invest in public works, it's a never-ending type of citizenship, literally. Um, and, uh, and it's very clear that in Mexico, I'm sorry.
I should get there.
I said. Anyway, um, you're constantly improving. Anyway, um, it really highlights the word, it's the 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 absence of leadership on on the, uh, on for the US federal government and the Mexican federal government at every level, and not maintaining that that ship in in Zepan. And the irresponsibility of allowing a system to collapse and watch it happen and then cover it up. Um, there's a great series on on Chernobyl on HBO that's instructive to watch because to watch under Russian government or the Soviet government covered up the collapse of a nuclear reactor in Chernobyl, it blew up, and then, um, basically didn't do anything about it until basically thousands of people died. It's very instructive. It's the same process that's happening there. So I'm really proud of this this team here, um, and our entire city for supporting public works, but more importantly, reaching out across the border to make sure that other folks, way more money than way more responsibility, actually, to talk. Um, so, thank you. I'm not my cell phone, so I'll, but, yeah, and thank you, Eric, and Chris, for all of what you do and all of that. And now, yes. And now we have, um, ten dollar items, two point one and two point eight, and we have speakers open. I have to ask this.
Thank you for, um, you see, to Mayor, to the, um, um, I was able to see the search and and probably see a little bit before I came. We were a little bit surprised because, you know, and we feel that, um, in the past where I had been working with us, we were just not more with that as well. So we probably need to have more knowledge on, um, um, you know, and, um, we're not helping the environmental issues. We are wanting to be able to give answers to the issues that we are fully aware of and be able to issue with better knowledge of what is happening, of those issues that I was hoping to, we want to have a little bit of the I am that coming up. I watched a video of this, we have a video that we're sure you saw, probably doing that. If the citizens are coming here, I'd be to start our program and just take them, even if we're here, I would be with, uh, to your shows, if you know what I mean. Um, there are kind of several of the com- uh, company that will come here. What should Allen be able to come here? I would like to see all the things come here these times. So my question is, I mean, I think I answered, but we can answer. Is there ever any new things that you think are the stores? Is the smaller stores, how would that would impact the smaller stores and the single serving items? If inventory is already being purchased, based on budget, can, uh, there be current inventory used to put this into effect? It's all part of there, even though it's second one. Even I am not as knowledgeable as they need to be. So, uh, for us in the in the business, we're hoping that you will reach out to us and sit down with us and the businesses and go over what's going to happen so that at the end of the six month, we are able to be in the face of, you know, where. So that's all I'm asking, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, video. So we can respond, and I know Mr. Hallard knows, uh, all upon that, and just, yeah, okay.
And I've had a chance to talk to the chairman, sorry. I had a chance to talk with the chamber director and a lot of all of this, and we we hope to get out some information to all the businesses. And I think some of the questions I had a chance to write down, I'll make sure the answers to this, we will put on the page and see what you can do in two weeks.
Yeah, and it's very clear from the public expression, that was why it's six months sort of implementation phase. I think it's very clear that, you know, there's there's exceptions for businesses that have a hard time. I know that certified foundation, for example, is 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 supporting, uh, or, you know, businesses with alternatives and so.
Yeah, sure. I would be more than willing to put you in. They have actually done some analysis on on places that you can go and purchase data that they're not as, um, exorbitant in prices. So I can help you with that anytime and would be would be more than willing to let me.
That would be very helpful.
No worries.
And then it's the number one question, you know, the other story, how it could change or anything. The smaller moment pops in or what's in front of you.
Please, you you got that under.
And my, thank you so much for the, maybe to, like, I was able to go to the city and have to, you know, help with it from the fort. And so, grandma, so, there you are.
My pleasure.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, and then I'd like to comment on the, um, on, I don't know, just two point three, on the last single, two one river, um, competition, just your comments made about international boundary law conditions, uh, removing sections and moving around, but let's make it clear, international boundary law condition, twice. Done very little. And I appreciate Mr. Pena, um, putting a dam, earth and dam in the river two way ago, um, right, was was done right after forty million down to zero, forty-five million down to zero, there were two weeks spilled in the river valley, which contributed to closure on May first. Um, and then it's really up in the willing bay of photographer who presented last month that documented, literally on a daily rate, daily basis, um, issues of flows in the river valley. He documented the fifty million gallons that came across this weekend. Um, he documented how the earth and weird that they built or the dam actually collapsed at the first sign of water. And so, you know, just, and then values of photographers and that's engineering faces to international boundary law condition. Again, this is just that, the difference between excellence and mediocrity or failure is like, it's just a percentage, it's a small percentage. It's very clear in international boundary law condition, um, which has a seventy million dollar in your budget, manages sewer shooting plants across the nine and six Mexico border, they just do a lot more to just make a difference. And the reason I brought up this idea is that this city, and we'll see that tonight in the budget hearing, gets so much done with so little because the people that are doing it actually care about doing a great job. And so it's something I'm really proud of. And, you know, the fact is, if we could take over everything, we would. If we had the the budget and we were given authority to move the river valley and manage it, we would do it and fix it. And if we could go into Tijuana and actually rebuild this sewer system, believe me, we could do it a lot better than is being done now. But unfortunately, we have to depend on people in other places that don't care as much. So anyway, it's very clear that the only thing moving this issue forward is the lawsuit. Um, and it's very clear that the Mexican government thinks that we're suing them. I'm not sure why, but that's actually a really good thing, and that's what's moving them to the table. Otherwise, the response is basically, you just, the response from the federal government, our federal government, is please leave us alone and just stop following us. So anyway, that's where we have to keep pushing. So anyway, we'll keep pushing, but, um, so to make sure that we hear comments about how great things are from the after that, a lot of the great job they're doing, the fact is it's the opposite. So, yeah. Um, with that, I'd like to kind of work with you, consent color items, number two point one, do you want me?
Say it.
Please vote. August, you're, I'm sorry.
You're great. You do a great job. Right now, unless you're in the, you're in a lot of many acts.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Now we have, uh, public thirty four point one, public hearing, current sanity guidelines, uh, regular health department variants, federal consumption, sewer system guidelines, um, for a two by drive for demolition and additions, um, at six thirty four, okay, land is a city matter of, uh, part of.
Uh, we're just requesting that you open to the side to get specific to follow some, uh, continue. So that will be our initial to, uh, pulling into the, to the.
At six.
Yeah, this is, yeah. Okay. All right. Great. So, well, yes, he's the first guy. We are getting a motion to say.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously by those present, absent.
Great, thank you. Uh, we're five one, closest to here, FY twenty and FY twenty one, sitting here, we're here in South Florida, and this is all we're doing.
Yeah, I think most, just just so everybody knows, um, visited by the workshop, maybe you guys know, we gave it over there, open house, we had a chance to hear, remember the republic, and that's been very helpful. We received some emails, we received a lot of different comments inviting us together. And so tonight, we're here, we can present the budget to the city council and the residents, and we can start the the next six week process for adopting our budget prior to the end of the fiscal year. Um, I would ask to just kind of give you a little bit of an overview about what we are with our budget process. So, you know, and I'm the only one that's gonna probably dance around a little bit, but I I can't help myself, but we went over there. Oh, I'm a dancing bear. But the one thing that we wanted the the public and the city council to know is that we actually passed a two-year, two-year budget. So we're actually, we do, we're looking at how the budget that will operate between July first of two thousand nineteen and it will then expire in June thirty of two thousand twenty. So just want to make sure everybody knows that. And then the information that is in this report is really focused on fiscal year twenty. Because when you get out to fiscal year twenty-one, it's a little bit out in the future, and we have some pretty specific numbers there, but we really wanted to concentrate on the next fiscal year, and then we'll come back and report to you during the next fiscal year about fiscal year twenty-one as we give a a clearer picture. Because again, it's really hard for us to just to predict what's gonna happen eighteen months from now. So it's, we really focus this conversation on fiscal year twenty. And then we'll make sure that, as I said, that we take you guys and monitor what's going on. So I want to talk to you guys a little bit about, I'm going to, so it's a total city So we really focus this much attention on fiscal year twenty. And then we'll make sure that, as I said, that we take you guys and monitor what's going on. So I want to talk to you guys a little bit about modeling our source of total city right now. In our revenue, it looks like we're going to be at about thirty three point four million dollars on total revenue. Of that, twenty million dollars, about twenty point eight million dollars of that is general fund. The successor agency, that's kind of a unique term, maybe not everyone has heard it. Successor agency succeeded our redevelopment agency. And so that is the redevelopment agency. And what you see here essentially are the bond payments that are being made in the redevelopment agency. We request these from the state of California since the redevelopment agency was dissolved. They send us the money, we make bond payments. Sewer enterprise fund, the sewer system in the city is a separate fund, it is self-contained. The sewer has to generate enough revenue to operate itself. We cannot take money from the general fund and give it to the sewer. So the sewer is an independent operating enterprise. And then part of the gas tax is used in the general fund for the streets department, but some of it is not accounted for in the general fund and it goes for other projects in the community. So we want to make sure that it's identified. And then there's some other expense here, there's a lighting district and a few small expenses in the city. But essentially, the total revenue of the city, including the general fund, is about thirty three point four million dollars. The expense of the city this year, uh, I'm sorry, the next, in fiscal year twenty, you can see here the general fund, the successor agencies, sewer enterprise and everything, it almost, it almost lines up to some extent. But you'll notice, and I wanted to make this really clear, the revenues of the city are about thirty three point four million, the total expenses are another thirty four million. So there's about, there's about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference there. I want to explain to the city council where that difference is. It's primarily, it's not primarily, it's wholly in two areas. We will be spending more money in our risk management fund and on our vehicle replacement fund than what we're replacing it through the general fund or the successor agency. And I wanted to point out that both of those funds have fund balances and in the short term, that's probably okay. In the long term, one of the, about the only thing I'm really, really worried about in our budget is we want to make sure that we are properly funding these internal service funds. So you can see right here, that's the difference between our revenues and our expenditures and essentially our internal service, um, there's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our internal services that's going to be used by fund balance. And each of those funds have enough balance to do that. There's still something we want to watch, something we want to really, really pay. So I really want to turn, first, I want to thank all the partners, they're very, very helpful. And Erica and Claudia, of course, your finance, uh, the people who really did the hard work and really kind of carried this thing along. And I'll turn some time over to Erica, but I just want to kind of give you guys a little bit of a primer about where we're, where we're at, where we're starting and I'll try to go to Erica for.
We like sure everybody speaks to the microphone, you also can hear it.
Yeah, hopefully, you can, you're okay back there, Tyler?
Hear me?
Right. You can hear when they talk off.
Definitely want to speak into the microphone, thanks.
Me, me, Mayor Council staff, community. I'm not going to be up there because um, I'm going to do another type of ban. It was fun to balance the budget and it's a different type of, but um, just for those that don't know Claudia, but no, um, because she's my first time in the finance department and I thought it was a great opportunity to know her, so I'm going to introduce her formally. Um, the presentation, just for the general fund, and as you said, this will focus on fiscal year twenty. There's specific guidelines that our principles that we put together when we were starting to develop the um, the budget, the draft budget. First, we wanted to see community input. We had an open air open house, we had a good turn out, uh, we did write a budget presentation, uh, transparency, accuracy, verification, we we look at all the numbers, we read these, we verify the information, we make own calls, uh, ensure that some of the data that we have from the past and that we're going to discuss in the, um, and, you know, as I said, we've always found this budget as well. Um, we wanted to make sure that we maintain a current level of staff with the public safety, do not touch, you know, life guard, sheriff and fire departments. And um, uh, review some of the vacancies that we have, um, with some of the departments we have in common, which may be a lot of other departments as well. Um, some of the principles that we had is obviously we've been collecting um, accurate information, trend, um, in in the revenues, in the expenditures, you know, account for all the automatic increases. So we have representative employees that are paid on a step schedule, one, two, six. And so every year at their anniversary, they receive an increase. So I wanted to make sure that we account for those automatic, automatic increases and um, and then turn every line item or expenditure, we look at all the requirements and make sure that we look at the process and what's expected in the future. Some of the required um, principles that we had is obviously to be an honest overview and financial condition. Um, following a budget is not very easy, so we wanted to simplify it, uh, especially for the community so they they know, you know, uh, for instance, what is C I B, you know, those kinds of things, or you know, when is my street going to be paid? Um, and we just said, really, right now, you know, what is gas tax, what is transit, all those details. Some of the areas of concern that are for us is basically that, that we're not funding properly some of the internal services, for instance, um, you know, I oversee risk management. That's one of the areas that I consider you're in a job, um, our risk management, um, rates for premiums, we are general, general um, liability, we have a work income, um, and some of the litigation. Some um, areas of success, um, the council members actually, um, this year encouraged uh, us to send a creep payment to helpers to pay off the way that we're under by the rest of that, literally will help us balance the budget. So thank you, that was a great move and now also another area of success is the continued bonds from the public. Again, the, making everything to understand. Um, these are the general fund revenue growths for fiscal years seventeen and eighteen, these are actual numbers, nineteen, twenty and twenty one, there are estimates. Um, the fiscal year nineteen, um, should be a little more linear following the, the between nine, eighteen and twenty. Um, and that's just because we probably um, overestimated some of the revenues and party calculations. Um, there was a change in the process, how we issued tickets or we thought, or you know, previous director thought it would be more successful, but um, what we continue to monitor a lot. General fund revenue in the summary, um, so we have the Port of San Diego, we have fines, we have um, intergovernmental, other, um, and taxes and transfers. So we give you a little description of that, but um, as you can see, the Port of San Diego is a great partner for the city of Imperial Beach. Um, and then we get our big taxes from property tax, sales tax and um, T O T. So at the open air open house, um, somebody asked, what do you need revenue from the Port of San Diego? So we thought we took this opportunity to educate for those members that won't press them during the open, open house. So the city of Imperial Beach and Port of San Diego, you know, have a contract to provide basically maintenance and service in all the Thailand areas. So we, we, we expect revenue from them in exchange for maintaining the Thailand's. The major um, revenue sources come from T O T, um, property tax, gas tax, sales tax, franchise tax and Port of San Diego. Um, one other thing that I do want to say, that the property tax, Port of San Diego and franchise tax are all um, consistent, they're stable revenues, the other ones are dependent on the economy. General fund expenditures, um, so in your books, you do have public policies in the back, you put organization in charge. So the way we structure, the city manager now structure the um, city of Imperial Beach management team, we have the city manager, basically focusing on public safety, we have the existing city manager, uh, focusing on the physical um, aspect, development, overworks, environmental. And then I have um, the administrative function, just the resources, finance, city clerk, you know, all the administration. So we wanted to do that snapshot, um, in in a nutshell, basically the way we organize the, the, the city. The general fund of labor and operations, um, then animal control, city attorney, sheriff, which is uh, to the left, there are all contract services, and then the employee labor cost and our city operations. The um, fund balances, these are um, estimated by the end of June thirty of two, two, twenty nineteen. We um, earlier in the year, we reported that we were in the, we were in the middle of the audit, we're very close up completing it, uh, eighteen, nineteen. And um, to one of your future meetings, close future meetings, we're reporting out on the final, um, preliminary, a little stirred up. Um, so the general fund, I wanted to point out the specific column on the left, general fund for unassigned reserve and economic uncertainty, those are policies established by the city council. Establishing, um, city council has um, requested that we um, maintain between thirty and forty percent of the general fund expenditures, which right now we're sitting at about thirty eight percent. And then the economic concern, the policy is ten percent of the general fund expenditures. Currently, we're sitting about ninety five. The column in the left, so those are all your um, capital fund, you know, public works, all streets, et cetera. And then all the internal service funds are the ones that are the kind of, are near like the risk. Um, basically, they service all of these things, we, we, these are service providers, if you like to all, um, a service to all the city. Major revenues, um, these, um, so the, the revenue, the revenues increased um, about four hundred thousand. Major revenues come from these, these are basically contracts, taxes. And then some of the, um, obviously the Port of San Diego convention are, are a very great, great partner. And some of the reductions came from those, our compensation, like I mentioned, revenue, we sort of overestimated some of the anticipated revenue that we should receive this current this period. Other governmental revenue, rent and interest. Rent and interest is basically land, so we had a set of, set of, cell towers, sorry, I was going to say cell. A cell tower at the sports park that, you know, they used to place these and we moved them. So that's, that's the, the balance area there. On the expenditures part, so um, the sheriff's contract, which were um, we had three out of five, um, the, in fiscal year twenty, the contracts expected to increase about four hundred and twenty two. In fiscal year twenty one, about three hundred and eighty three, a total of eight oh four in two year three. Some of the reductions, again, uh, for the council members, and thank you for letting us allow to do this, with the creep payment to helpers. Um, although we were able to pay off a big portion of the public safety and some of the general um, miscellaneous and all, we still have, we still have liability to pay. Um, and then um, some of the minimum actions as well. So what did we have to do to balance the budget? Again, we didn't cut any public, you know, sheriff, your life guards, you know, fire, no animal control. We did have to initially get creative, we had to analyze some of our vacancies, some of our decisions, some succession planning, um, and combine some duties and some responsibilities. We also looked at some vacancies, you know, to see what can we do or reclassification to a lower, lower position. For instance, I pointed it out in the second summary, and the human resources department, city manager used to share full-time person. So we decided to uh, reduce it to part-time and lower the classification. Um, I think, you know, those are the, some of the way to create the board of the day. So um, I mean, a, a big thing that we had to do was basically reduce the board of classes by two hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, two hundred and two thousand five hundred. So in the snapshot, you know, it's the sheriff's cost increased by four hundred and twenty and the operations increased by forty, um, which is offset by reduction of some of the personnel cost. And our general fund grew to one hundred and seven. Other than that, no other significant changes. These are the non-general um, um, funds that we were talking about earlier, which is our internal services. So um, as you can see, you know, risk is sitting at five, five eighty eight. Information technology, for maybe, vehicle maintenance, five thirty, facilities, we have the sewer, sewers, sewers doing great, um, in my, it's, and a price fund. But um, other than that, those are some of the areas that were concerned because, you know, after base vehicles, we have claims, we have premiums to pay, I guess, and that. Then we're going to see everything.
Do you hear me? I was planning the next two years of the C I B program. Um, split into two years, FY twenty, looking at projects uh, posted there, Pro Beach Boulevard, the uh, the rest funding is in FY twenty for the, the back end of the Ivy Boulevard project. I can talk about that a lot quite a bit, um, going forward. The community enhancement project, C E O's twenty twenty is a, that's just a, a small amount of funds there to try and go out and start to gather, we need to get uh, folks on board to go out and get some grant funding about that. It's a, it's a real four year, you know, the big picture type solution on, once it goes to enhancement, it's going to need some, some hundred dollars overall project. Uh, we've spoken recently about the citywide street by infill, those, those ones there provide us with uh, special poles that the city can put in, in, in uh, S D G and top poles with some new lights. Uh, the bigger projects, we mean, there is the remaining alley improvement project, we've got, we've got about uh, about ten alleys left in town that are either ice, uh, we're still asphalt or dirt, uh, and we'd be looking to get those uh, concrete in and kind of end with that uh, citywide effort uh, there. So a hundred and fifty dollars in the first year for that. Going on to the next year. I'm sorry. So we plan the second year of uh, overlaying uh, gas fault in the facial driveway, uh, we've got another major uh, roadway paving project, we'll probably end up combining uh, twenty and twenty, probably end up combining twenty twenty one for a major paving project. Um, and then looking at some solutions out there, the, the paving out here in city hall as well, uh, potentially looking at paving and maybe some solar installations there. So that's, that's the parking and last paving project.
We're going to talk about this at the, at the end or now?
All right, you can do that. We, we were going to just, we're almost done with the presentation, we're going to have shoot through the five budgets and then.
Okay.
And then kind of open the sidebar.
Last major project, we do have some S D G need twenty funds, these are used for undergrounded. Uh, there's been an undergrounded district in place, uh, from Thurnell and Donax, uh, eastern part of town, uh, and there's some significantly planned double there, probably starting to get serious about that on the ground project in the second year or so.
So Mayor Council, the, the first thing we wanted to do, just shoot through some, and this is going to be really high wall, uh, we're going to shoot through each one of the budgets as very quickly and give you an idea of what's happening in this apartment. So they have assigned me, of course, as public safety and working with the city council. We talked about the mayor and council budget and city manager budget and a few things that are going on. And Mayor Council, there were really no significant changes, of course. Uh, we do not have full-time council members and so you're not a better, you're not a huge test to the city. Um, but there were a few changes that were made. One of the things that came up in the briefcase with the city council is, gee, one of the salaries up there on top. Just so you know, you do share, you share an employee with the city manager, um, same that is shared between the city council and the city manager. And that's kind of why you see salaries from the city, um, council budget, you know, that was one of the issues coming up. As far as the city attorney goes, man, it's hard, it's been pretty long protection. Um, so it's kind of a whole lot we can do, then the third, she just, she sits over there and just, there, there down in this room. Um, as far as the city manager budget, the big thing we'll see is there was an increase in the salaries in the city manager's budget. What that really represents is when we moved the events from fire department over to city hall, that salary ended up in the city manager's budget. So that's a re-allocation as much as anything else. That, I think I am, um, also, uh, wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the sheriff's department. And I, it was mentioned that the sheriff's department budget is. And I, it was mentioned that the Sheriff's Department budget is increasing, it's increasing more rapidly, of course, from the other budgets in the city. Much more rapidly than our other revenues. I know we wanted to talk about that at the very end, um since we get through these, we'll put, there's some policy things we wanted to just touch with the council very quickly. And so once we get through the budget, there's a few policy issues, and this is one of the ones I wanted to bring up because in the briefings, a couple of you had asked me if you could prepare an analysis of what's happening in some of the other communities. And I have those analysis down, so that I can show those people very quickly. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Coon and talk about this stuff.
Uh Mayor, City Council, um I'll be real brief on the Fire Department budget. A lot of um what I'm gonna say, it's just gonna be a repeat of what Erica has said. Um the Fire Department budget, if you look at the uh, the bottom line, is actually uh less than this year's budget. And um with that budget, um last year, we had a twelfth firefighter position that was added to the budget. Uh for the next two years, we'll maintain that um firefighter position. And one of the big savings we have in our budget is gonna be to the unfunded liability with the purrs. You can see a savings of uh two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars there, which um really decreased our budget. Um and even with an increase in our technical services, we had an increase in our dispatch agreement. And you can see a, probably about a forty thousand dollar increase this year, and yeah, maybe a little bit less. But even with that increase, um the Fire Department budget is even less than last year's even um overall. So uh I'd like to thank uh Erica and Andy and all the Finance Department for all the hard work they've put in for us here. I guess animal control is under me. So um real brief on the animal control here. Um last year, um City Council and City Staff moved from the City of Chula Vista to Humane Society. And we went from a um Humane Society Officer, or from Chula Vista, four days a week to seven days a week, for almost the same price. But for fiscal year twenty, we have a ten thousand dollar increase, and next year, for twenty-one, is gonna be about a nine thousand dollar increase.
Eric, it's me. Under the Humane Society Department, uh Life Guard Services, Titans, Menace, and the Life Guard Program. Um for the Life Guard Services, um we've been able to add some positions, uh and ask them to put tenants, go down sergeants, so a really nice command structure. Over the, the um, the past few years, I think uh service has been running really well. Uh over our current budget we have, and the one that we got coming up, forecasted for twenty, twenty-one, uh I don't think this will change the services that will be up at the beach. I feel the beach area of, uh Imperial Beach is one of the cleanest and safest in the county. So if you go to any of the beaches, you go to O B, B B, uh come down Imperial Beach, and I think people are, you know, what we have down there, and how jealous we are for what we have. Um a couple of challenges that we have in the upcoming uh budget years, I see is lifeguards and standby. And having lifeguards that uh aren't delayed, after hours, so if there's an after hour call, right now, we use a call-out system for the phone list. And hopefully, you see somebody at home that's available to respond. Uh and it goes down, but it's not guaranteed the best experience. Uh hopefully, you do, uh but standby, uh having dedicated lifeguards to standby is an area that we need to fix, and it's an order to look for. The other one is part-time workers. Of the beach, some of the lifeguards in Titans, we have about fifty part-time workers, um for seasonal leaves. Lifeguards a few years ago, with our changes in personnel, more full-time staffing, we have minimal staffing, it's all full-time in our homes. And with Titans, we don't have that yet, so it's very hard to find staff that's gonna come in and work through the low wages that we have for that position and retain them. And it makes it very difficult with the A T R also to assure we have uh proper staffing, so. One thing that I think that could be a solution is that learning a nine-year agreement with the port, with services, with Titans, and, and lifeguards. Hopefully, we can meet with the port, we can analyze all the budget items we have now. It looks like uh the port gives us increases of uh C C B I, C I P. And uh those have been like one to two percent a year, but the cost per sheriff, lifeguards, all the port services that are in that contract have been going on a lot faster than that. So hopefully, we can negotiate that and find a solution for some place where we want to go. One last thing I'd like to say is the junior lifeguard program. Programming out here started uh twenty-four years ago, which is good timing. And uh twenty-five years, and uh hopefully um that program continues, and I know it will, and it's all tuition funded and by donations, so we'll continue on that.
Can I ask a question? One of the things we've talked about in our budget vision with Mr. Hall was on the possibility of maybe some sort of fundraising campaign, so you can do a D A P L I D, or something for the camp for summer or something like that. Maybe something worth trying, I remember we got in the Dempsey at La Poste, and you do like, you know, sponsorship in Dempsey, and maybe sixty dollars or something like that, but we actually. So, you know, a lot of cities do that, I know New York does that, they have, you know, some kid gets a fresh air fund or something like that. Anyway, maybe that's something to think about, and it's a little bit like to support you guys, to be driven, that, you know, the budget stuff, so. I mean, I don't think cities have done that before, but I know, you know, it's a really, really important program, it's really our only summer arts event program, and you know, it's more important than ever to make sure that you guys have the resources. So there's something we can think about, you know, with protein and Facebook, something like that, you know, it's starting off.
I'm really happy you brought that up, because I, I was thinking about this as well, I think that's really important, I was, I was wondering, you might be able to tie it into your mayor breakfast, did you? To, to include some stuff in, like the paddle, somewhere on the pier, maybe that's going to, whatever, we, we could start charging that and raising money and bringing it back to the local.
Money goes to, to the life assistance.
But more of today.
Yeah, okay, well, we, we can talk about that in the talk. I was like, we can't loot, we can't be worse than we are now, because zero, yeah, like zero, we can fund this, I mean, you know, we, we need to solve some.
Yeah, we can have a record issue, not like a teaching, but a license issue, so we can, we can add some laws to it.
Uh tweet, uh Mr. Ray Services Finance Department, so they do the day-to-day operation for finance, payroll, permits, cashiering. Um some of the major changes here is personnel restructuring, as earlier, I mentioned to Claudia, that's been a little restructuring, and assuming the role in the finance department. One of the major um reductions is, again, um the, kind of liability. And the risk management, um as I said earlier, there is a concern in not funding um the, the risk department appropriately. Um the non-departmental, um so if you look at past um budgets to this one, um it's a major restructuring, and the non-departmental basically we, we're ahead and um pulled out a lot of the costs that were in other departments, and put it in the, the non-departmental, that really don't apply to the, the co-creatives, the pension, uh for the unfunded liability, uh the membership dues. There's some reason finance was paid for that, it should be, any services that are applied citywide were um separating of most operating departments, including the non-departmental. So we just had a, a clear system. And the resources, you know, uh your ambassadors for the employees, we recruit, we have the benefits. Um the major change here is that we're gonna have one full-time, part-time position. And the senior center, um it's not an area of concern, but I would like to see, you know, uh more programs added. Um I know, when it's Chris, he'll talk a little bit of some opportunities there.
Sure. So one of the, one of the questions of um many of the senior citizens to, to rock here, I think this goes to really more, to, to actually generation, but is the hours that the senior centers open, only if it'll be a little more than a third day. They got the set, they got the hours really early, and they closed really ear, early too, or, or even get up, so. I think, you know, this really goes back to revenue generation, but I think they needed more money to keep their open, but I think maybe some shipping and all, maybe more beneficial for that, to see.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm sure the opportunity that Chris will share with you, it'll be, it'll be wonderful to have. I'm sorry, one of the other thing that I did forget to point out that we can be some personal accounts, that is not necessary because we have bodies, is last, at the last time, we, um we talked to you, saw the schedule for uh the representative bodies and that's because minimum wage factor, so you'll actually see a little bit of that changing all the operating for some of the classifications, and you have to do order of the minimum wage.
Mr. Hall, are, are, are most, do most cities manage their senior centers, or senior cities, or cities, or is, or is it less than partially not?
I think most, I think most cities manage their parks and operations, I think, where right now, like, we have, what's it called, we, we have them do our programs. We do not have them in the senior services, so it's kind of sitting out there alone, but when and if we restructure, for sure, there's some probably elevation.
Yeah, and to be honest, sort of, or is it a structure issue, is that, I mean, we haven't seen this in the department, which would maybe be, uh really be a part of the right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um for the city clerk's budget, the primary changes from uh the, from the adopted fiscal year twenty nineteen budget included a significant reduction in account dues and funded a great liability. Um another reduction is to the elections line item. As you know, our elections are held every even year, so um the fiscal year twenty is a reduction by uh thirteen thousand five hundred. But I do wanna note that in fiscal year twenty-one, it does go up significantly to cover the election in November twenty twenty. And that is our first uh district election for two council members. And then lastly, the other change, the last change is to the community programs line item. I used to be in charge of Symphony by the Sea, but now that we have a community, um a special events coordinator, the community programs uh budget item was moved into the City Managers Department. And that is it for the department, thank you.
Mayor Council, so the community development consists of your, your current planning, your long-range planning, your even out development, sort of that local council program that we're doing, all the developer applications. Um and so you can see, you know, the budget delta there, you're increasing salaries, not a vacuum in this department in terms of reusing positions from other, from other locations, and you'll see that in the, the I T budget. So the I T budgets and the salaries went down, it's also economy board, a position that had been, been filled previously. And so you can also see that we're also doing some, some modification and restructuring, you know, Erica mentioned getting creative with some of our positions. Um and so some of those duties are being uh reabsorbed in community development as well. Other than that, um really, really no, no changes in community development. Um so under community development, there was also building and housing inspection. If you'll recall, uh uh we had a happy year, we had authorized us to, to contract the best goal, and as again, we had searched for a building official, proved that successful. And so we were um doing some of those uh building official duties, some of those duties are being reabsorbed into community development, and also through, through our source. Uh but we continue to provide uh building and housing inspection services throughout the city. Um so, so again, with that, not, not too much of a change in that building and housing inspection program. Uh pro compliance, we have one and a half uh F T B full-time employees in pro compliance. And so um you, you understand pro compliance, it's one of those uh, those, those uh necessary community services that we provide, and we're always trying to balance that, again, with with issues ranging from whether it's landscaping, or as we heard, you know, last week, the social rentals, and everything in between. Um and again, no, no changes really in that budget whatsoever.
Uh P W A is uh, of course, we have a street sewer, a fleet, and um C I P program. Um and inside there's actually changes in top ten, not something about the health person, liability, the representatives, so cost of labor, insurance. Uh and suicide, um there's been quite a change in sewer division the last two years since I've come on board. We had some of the costs on the labor side kind of go, show going up, and it's mostly because uh high reported lifestyle is going to keep the sewer good. Uh we've done some uh attrition there, and what is to be, that, that salary is compensated for in, in street division. I, I have probably been in some suicide, or align this, more my salary shows up there. Uh there are other costs, the, the deep risks on the, on the uh operations side, I think, a little more in there. Uh we've completed our, that major um sewer management plan. Uh we've had some equipment purchases, and we've been doing certain sewer drop in the last two years, so we're seeing some equipment costs and some professional services dial down over the next few years on the suicide. On the next one. Two events, again, we know that the, the, the salary side, normally, major deep risks uh has to do with the health persons, but also back to the higher cost, my salary goes toward the suicide. Uh on the operations side, it generally cuts across the board. Um hopefully, uh my big concern here is gonna be on the uh gas launch, the S D G, we put in a promise we might as well last uh, nine months, and so uh they're, they're more efficient, and so hopefully, those costs form to be bought on us, but that's, that's seventy-one point nine, I think, I think we'll afford in two. We will manage this, our food division, um not too many changes, uh the biggest ones are down, the equipment line item, and bottom, says the, the vehicles are being purchased. You don't see one coming in the next fiscal year, year after that, uh there's room for maybe one or two pickups that, that's, that we'll afford, uh so that's the only real change.
Okay, so solarless management, I think a really lesson on all its budgets is a, we're a little over the line for the last two years, this next two years. Not a lot of changes across all of it, especially on the power side. Solarless is, is the same for, to that figure, but we're about to have a new change in our, in our next couple of years, and that's because of big on organic recycling. So while you don't see those in the past, where it is, we can be a lot more activities, like this, uh O B, and talking, they're talking, and beyond. There's a shield over there, I think, uh C I P, right, second, so that's really exciting. Other than that, it's all, it's always management, you do uh just recycling program, hazardous waste programs, although operation costs are probably, we do the worst medical, personal. So range, uh cost always go up to sort of range, but I get the one big thing to see here is really our uh professional services, we're at the top of that. That is really because of the city, I think, for all the, the regional cooperations, for the state of Baywatch, and for Baywatch. Um it actually works in our favor because the target team does, they're all in it, and it covers most of our costs, our cost share for that program. If it wasn't for us, we'd be in Baywatch, we'd be seventy-eight thousand, we'd be a large cost share of, of, for this, for this program, for this, for this program. Uh but what I think about looking ahead, there's new store, there are like, there are like, um issues anticipated this year. There is a little additional water cost on there, I don't know exactly how much that's gonna be, uh, because I, uh, this is a, uh, this is a. Uh facility management, I think you know that we do our best to, 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 to really do a set budget. Uh the one, concerning on facilities, we will just be wanting to rate, or, you know, we, the entire repair yard is a talent. Uh this is the example, uh we had reinitiated the firework this year, uh but during our fire repair level, just one of those years ago. We have a lot of things that we're just trying to hold together, hold together, most of the managers, uh, one, one is to, 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 to this one, so we're gonna, we're gonna do this.
Uh we were planning, working out that this is all part of it, so. So I was like, I wanted to, to meet you.
I don't know, actually, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Sorry, these are, they're, they're up there, so. Really, first, I really appreciate um all of you that spent, I mean, you're in City Hall, I mean, really good safety and top of all, anyways, I'm just surprised, it's just, it's awesome. But it's awesome, I thought we created this all for you. But it's awesome, I thought we created this.
So yeah, the second year at C I P, but it doesn't, uh, fund, for seeing all of this.
Um, we have lots of facilities, work with, uh, uh, hard maintenance. Let's get this, um, hard maintenance, uh, there's some, some transfers into this, so you might see some of our, um, uh, majors, or majors don't have this because these two twelve after, between divisions and public works, not just consolidate all their, so we, but we don't want to begin our major cards, you know, with the, uh, streets, uh, right, off the park, uh, the waters, they, and, um, they basically have their, uh, these.
So quickly, I T, uh, as I mentioned earlier, so this is one of the, uh, the, uh, opportunities to where multiple hats, not like the mayor, where the, the clerks had earlier today, with , uh, India America, uh, taking a number of the, uh, jobs from, uh, admin services. So I T, again, handles all of our computers, um, there's an internal service on the A C earlier, and you can see the, uh, the change in the, in the personnel because our G I S, um, component, or a part of that component was shifted over into development, so I get a lot of, a lot of sort of movement there. Um, other than that, not a, uh, a whole lot of modifications to this budget, um, but again, looking at streamlining, a lot of those different, um, excuse me, those line item services into sort of the, the general city pool, if you will. Uh, and again, a lot of this is funded by the other departments because it's a service that, that I T provides, uh, to those, to those different departments.
And Mayor, because I just want to point out, we don't anticipate, at least in the T E department, there may be some quality expansion now, but we don't anticipate any changes in our operation program and those, uh, services programs to the city, so, but it's just consistent. But, um, Mayor and Council, just so quick, and, and he goes, you know, he became a grandpa in the last three decades.
I, I just see the budget at all.
But my wonderful mind to me is, is that I've actually been doing this for thirty years, which is hard for me, because I don't feel like I can call it that, right? But I just want to let you know, I've worked with a lot of people over three decades, and you guys are really blessed to have amazing leadership in this, in this organization. And I know every city manager is going to get up and say that, but I think you guys know we're extremely blessed, not just the leadership, but, but the entire staff that we have in this city is amazing, and what they, what they do is really unbelievable, and I just want to say that because some of these slides will show it. When you look at revenue from, uh, with us compared to some of our surrounding cities, this is really, really important. So if you look at the city of Coronado, they basically get in revenue in their, in their general fund, about twenty-two hundred, almost twenty-three hundred dollars per person in your city. National City, about nine hundred and sixty-seven, and in the city of Imperial Beach, we give about seven hundred and seventy-two dollars per person. So that's kind of, sometimes I don't know if residents know it, but they're getting a heck of a deal from how brutal you guys are being, some good decisions that you're making, and mostly from the great work of our city employees. So I just want to make sure that people recognize how, how lean you guys run a great ship, and, and yet Imperial Beach, I think, continues to get better every year, and to me, there's, there's a lot to be said for that. So the one thing that I've been asked about, or readings to talk about, and, and just so we understand it a little bit more, is the sheriff's contract and what's happening, and, and to do some comparative analysis and what, what it really means for us and what's happening in our city. So I wanted to compare, kind of, the South Bay at first, and what you see here is Imperial Beach, yeah, our, our sheriff's contract is about seven and a half million dollars, and that equates to about seven, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars per resident in our community. Now Chulavista has a police budget of about fifty-six and a half million dollars, and that's about two hundred and twelve dollars per resident. So, you know, the, again, I don't know what to read, it, it was very hard, there's not a lot of co, coalition, or, it, it was very hard to, to really hone in on what this really means because it was all over the place.
That is, that's part of the Chulavista's, and the city, with that, is very understaffed.
They have been, in fact, they just passed a new tax. That's right, just last year, they passed a new tax because literally, they feel like they're not spending enough on their, on their policies. City of San Diego is about three hundred and thirty-six, National City, who has their own police departments, spends about four hundred and sixty-six dollars per resident, and then Coronado, the, the Everdano of California, spends about five hundred and four dollars, uh, per resident. Now, now, some of the things we might read into this is that maybe it's very expensive for small cities to have their own police department. You know, what are these correlations? I don't know exactly what they are, but, but I was asked to put this together, it at least helps us think about what's happening in public safety. Then I was also asked to compare our city with other sheriff's cities, other sheriff contracts, what does that look like? So Imperial Beach, again, was at two seventy-eight. Uh, Lemon Girl, for example, uh, six point three million for their, their sheriffs, about two hundred and thirty-six per resident, San Tia's about two hundred and fifty-six per resident, and Solana Beach is about three hundred and four per resident. So you can kind of see here, again, and I apologize, I have not had a long time to synthesize this data, this was just the briefies that I've had in the last couple of days, but I still think it's good comparative analysis that we need to start to look at as we start to approach one of the, clearly the largest expense we have in our city, so it's something that we need to be cognizant of and, and really think about.
Most importantly, we pay a lot of crime rate in all of those agencies.
Correct, yeah, we, uh, we, we are very blessed here, we have a very low crime rate, and, and second or third in the county almost, um, on, on a regular basis now. So the other thing that, that I was asked to make sure that we understand is that at times, we have had our residents say, or they'll come to us and say, we don't know why we only have two police officers in our community, but want to make sure that people understand we, that, we don't, we have more than two police officers in our community. So, so we want to make sure they understand we have eleven, we pay for eleven deputy patrol officers, essentially, it takes about three and a half officers to make up one position because you have twenty-four hours a day, you have people on vacation, you have sick leave, some of those kinds of things. And then we have some traffic officers, special purpose officer detectives, uh, we have community service officers, patrol sergeant, traffic sergeant, detective sergeant. So at our station, in the menu, and again, what happens is you can, you can order, or order if you want, from a menu, how many officers you want to have in the sheriff's department at your, in your city, at your substation. And what we have ordered on our menu is twenty-five point seven, basically, sworn officers at our station, and then there's also some substation staff and support. Just want to make sure people understand the makeup of sheriff's department here, again, because it's a very big part of our budget, but yet not part of our city, and so I think that that's what we do. Then you guys hate my tree, but I don't care, I like my tree. So one of the things we want to talk to the council about, or talk about policies, is previously, we put this together and we said, every, everything inside the blue line here is, is us, we, we can, this is what our revenues and our expenditures allow us to do, but we have some of these things outside of our circle that we want to do, we wanted, we wanted some community enhancements and sidewalks and hourly completions, we wanted to remodel our city buildings and, uh, senior citizens and our street people lighting, some of those kinds of things. So if you start getting outside the blue circle, you got to blue, grow the blue circle, and you can deal with these things, with vehicle licensing, transit occupancy tax, franchise, some of those kinds of things. So if we're going to grow services in the community, we also have to grow revenues because all of these things cost money. And we talked about some of these dark clouds out there in the highs, with calpers and environmental issues and some of those things, so we've always tried to keep that in mind. But I'll tell you, we, we are running a really ruined language, and at some point, one of the things we're going to have to at least have a conversation about in our community with the council, with the residents, is are there some opportunities for revenue generation? I, I'll tell you, as a city manager, I'm not sure that we can cut any further without making development, we are getting really lean on, as you heard today, there's a lot of hats up here, you see about five people, but what you may not see is about fifteen positions. And so one of the things we got to think about is wherever we're going forward in the future, I think there's some great opportunities, we have no municipal debt, that is a real, real blessing for our city, but our surrounding cities have already enacted some of these or most of these, and so we got to think about how, and I hate to say keep up with the Joneses, but the reality is, you know, they have found it necessary, and we may as well, but we, we can't keep coming, we may have to look at revenue generation. One that's been mentioned a couple of times is renegotiation with Ford, we're in year seven of a nine-year contract, we've talked with the Ford, they're very open to renegotiating and, and moving that contract forward, but they have been a great partner, and I think that they'll continue to be a great partner, they haven't resisted the fact that they know we got to renegotiate this contract, so I think they'll look at that. The transit occupancy tax, sometimes, you know, that's the first time, that's the first place sometimes cities will go, and it makes a lot of sense, residents don't have to pay it. The T O T is paid by visitors that come and stay in hotels, and so it becomes very attractive to a city because your, your residents aren't, aren't focused on that, maybe some of the people that come visit them, you know, but, but the reality is they don't have to pay it on a daily basis. Our city generates about, we have a ten percent, I know, our, our transit occupancy, occupancy tax is about ten percent. Many cities are higher, especially San Diego County on, on the whole, it's a little bit lower, but when you get in areas like San Francisco, Palm Springs, their T O Ts are actually pretty high, ours is at ten percent.
What's Palm Springs?
Palm Springs is at fourteen, um, San Francisco, I think, is the highest of the state, I think they're at sixteen or seventeen, I think they're the highest, but, um, so we get ten percent right now, and we generate about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in, in T O T. So if we were to, and using today's numbers, if we were to raise our T O T by one percent, it'd be four thousand, so three percent would be somewhere around quarter of a million. So just to kind of give you an idea that, you know, that that's something that the city council wants us to explore, gives you an idea of the kind of revenues that we might be able to look at or generate. What Chulavista did last year, and what National City did, I think, two years ago, was a, a utility users tax, U U T, it, it, it's completely different than what it sounds. Essentially, what it does is it raises your sales tax one percent. And ours, and so ours, what we get right now is one percent in sales tax, so it would basically double our sales tax, and we would, we would generate about one point two million dollars by, by doing a one percent, if we said, or something like that. We do have some assets, we might want to think about some of the assets the city has. The city has a, uh, public works yard that is, that several developers have come and said, hey, have you ever sailed that, have you ever been thinking of doing something to that? The problem is, we don't know where to put it, we're built out of communities, so we're not exactly sure where, where we have to look at relocating, so we've been asking, should we look at the, maybe, maybe help us out, or, so we're exploring all those options, but not real seriously yet because we have currently the capital, well, hundred percent, by the way. Uh, we have a sewer system that right now is an asset, because as we move towards, um, the water reuse, that they're trying to do is a pure water system with Metro, which Councilman Sprig sits on, independently, we're very small, we probably don't generate enough fluid, affluent to put a re-treatment plant or, or treatment plant here in Imperial Beach for the reuse of that water. But if you have part of a larger system, it becomes a very lucrative opportunity. So one of the things that we might want to explore is if we can keep our sewer rates at or below what the city can provide sewer, and someone wants to come in and privatize that system, should we go there? So there are some opportunities there, community facilities district, that's, or a parcel tax, that's raising people's property tax, might be less likely in the community lines, it's hard to, it's hard to know, but again, I'm just putting up here some ideas. And then, of course, we really want to expand our economic development activities, still a while, um, the mayor and I were going to I C S C and trying to bring businesses here and, and whatnot, and we were relatively successful, and we haven't participated in that in a couple of years. And now we want to make sure that as Palm Avenue starts to, to get some attention and some of the other, the communities changed a little bit, we want to make sure that we're expanding our economic development activities, um, speed put together, uh, some, some very attractive, in fact, you guys are all going to want one of these books, but we can't have one yet because, um, we only made enough for that C S C. But, but some, we really need to expand and make sure that we're taking advantage of our commercial properties and, and, so, we just want to make sure that as we kind of wrap this up, to take any public comments if you guys want to take, or, or start to engage with the city council about the budget, so we talked about the whole gamut, we see, we, we always seem to concentrate on two things, the C I P and expenditures, but as part of this conversation, I hope that we'll also have some discussion about revenue, uh, because I think that at some point, there's other revenue generations. So we have public comments?
Mr. Mr. Day. I have a question, you can call it a form later, but yeah, come on up. Actually, I think this is a pretty easy question. Thanks for being here, this is the most important meeting of the year, so.
And maybe on the second question, remember having the budget.
If you can get city council, mayor, and staff. Actually, the question I had was for those of us who work, or who are more, you know, a layman position, there were the line items included in, uh, in many of the, uh, budgets, which was called cafeteria, and I know Andy likes a good sandwich. All those departmental processes over a million dollars, I have to assume we're not, we're not feeding the staff, some other, I don't know, hopefully, you can explain that.
Yes, thank you.
You exactly.
So I oversee the resources, and I was saying, the operations of all the, um, health benefits and salaries, that is actually the appropriate word for health benefits, dental vision. So cumulatively, with all the, the personnel, that is, um, you can call it different ways, flexible spending, you know, financial plan, and it's basically aimed to be health benefits, dental vision.
Okay, thank you for that question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Day.
Other to show up, public comments? Um, so we'll start with, I was, you know, the budgets, there are usually problems to start with, so that would be.
Sure, uh, I'm on my nerves here. Guys, you okay? Just have to be closer, better. Um, first of all, I'd say thanks to, uh, staff and all the department heads, and department heads, like, as, as well as, uh, I, I mean, leaders, uh, for what you do. Um, every time I go into Andy's office lately, uh, his budget has been on his screen, as well as, uh, Erica, I haven't been in the pod these months, but, uh, and the one thing I know is they've been working on this for months, and, um, and I, I have full trust and confidence in, uh, all of you, uh, in this budget, and, uh, um, trust, um, confidence, so, enough to say on that. Uh, as city council members, uh, we, we have a few major, uh, responsibilities, uh, public safety, definitely, quality of life, zoning, make sure we take care of that, and making sure we have a balanced budget, and if we follow those three, everything else kind of falls into place, so, uh, I, I think we're, we're doing that excellent. Um, I was excited to see, uh, seniors, uh, going up from thirty-four thousand to forty-eight thousand, uh, is long overdue, uh, and I think we should keep that trend of, uh, giving more money to the seniors center. Um, one thing I overlooked, and, and I don't know how, but, the junior lifter program, I noticed, uh, it, it dropped by ten thousand dollars, and it's, it's, it's the only program that we, the city, have, and it pays for itself, uh, so that's a little surprising. Marine safety department went up fifty-six thousand, and I think I would give them sixty-six thousand if I could, I mean, they deserve everything they get, and I understand that, uh, Chief Stavina has a certain amount of money to work with, and, like everybody, um, so I'm not going to put it on him, but I'm going to put it on city staff, um, so what can we do to get that ten thousand dollars back? Because, uh, well, I'm going to keep going here, but just kind of think that question. Uh, I know animal control, we gave them ten thousand more, so ten thousand more for some dogs and cats, and ten thousand dollars less for kids, uh, so that, that kind of hurts. Uh, then we do, uh, the one I know to be common on a lot, uh, is supplementing Boys and Girls Club and Little League and softball, a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, and that program, although we know in advance that we're, we're doing this, um, I just don't want to see the junior lifter program lose ten thousand this year, and then little next year, and little next year, I mean, there's a waiting list, we're turning, they're turning kids away from that program, uh, and definitely dear, near a year in my heart, I was about to say. Um, so, I think about that as well.
Yeah, I, I should, that's a really good question, I should clarify that, the Boys and Girls, I'm sorry, the junior lifter program is self-running, you said? So that number, that forty-four thousand seven hundred is going to generate last year, so it is probably the budget this year, that they generate fifty-five thousand dollars this year, the key, this is why, so, no money is taken out of that program, so in some ways, that particular number is a place where you don't think that money is going anywhere else, it stays in the program, and I believe they actually have some money left over from previous years, so we.
Well, I'm sure it rolls over, but I see in there, there's a, uh, salary minus six thousand, and unemployment's minus three thousand plus, so there's money being taken out.
Well, again, so this year, they generate forty-four thousand, spend forty-four thousand, if they, if they generate fifty thousand a summer, they can spend fifty thousand, if they generate sixty thousand, if they generate a hundred thousand, they can spend a hundred thousand. If they generate sixty thousand, if they generate a hundred thousand, they can spend a hundred. So I don't want to give you the impression that we are decreasing the program, we're just matching up the revenues with the expenditures for the Junior Life Program. Now, if the city council would like to further subsidize the program, you could do that. You could add money to the program in addition to what they bring in to the program, that is possible. You could do that.
So how would that work?
You would instruct staff, if you wanted to add ten thousand dollars for the Junior Life Art Program?
Yeah, I'd like to instruct staff, I'd like to add two thousand dollars.
Three would be, would you instruct staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, and maybe that would touch an area. Yeah, or Parks and, I think, what's going to come out of that, and I think we're all, we're seeing this future, you know, what our, you know, strategic sort of organization, we can structure it. Really, it's a Parks and Rec service, right? And so I think this council would be right clear that we want to, we're concerned about the lot, you know, a hundred thousand more a year, plus forty-four thousand for Parks and Rec services, plus senior center. You know, per capita, that may be a low as any higher state. So, yeah, I think, I'm sure this council would agree to read you or definitely more resources. In addition to that, maybe, again, you know, feel good in Facebook, Facebook media campaign, you know, sponsor a gift box or anything like that, send a gift for summer camp. Just give that.
Well, yeah, that's an excellent list. So anyway, just, so looking at that, just what, you know, thinking in the back of your minds, what can we do to make sure that we're funded, even though they take care of themselves? Not in my mind, just ignore all this. And then the revenue generation that you brought up is awesome. The T O T is definitely, definitely for that. Raising that T O T, one plus two percent, whatever we agree on. Sales tax, that's just, I can't, nobody wants to say yes on that. But maybe somebody does, not me. Public Works, moving that, I think that's an excellent idea. And we're finding some possible revenue from that land. Sewer system, I think we need to look into that more. And I think you nailed it on the dot of saying, making sure, somebody does take it over, but the rates stay the same. And they don't come in and just all of a sudden play all the citizens' rates. And I think that is it. Thanks for listening to my comments and my, right?
Thanks, Mr. Dugan. We have a position of public speaker, Mr. Eric Garcia, S C I U, thank you so much, and a former city employee, so thank you so much.
Thank you. So okay, very safe from the president of S C I U, welcome to one, and also former city of Imperial Beach Sheriff. And I do want to say that I appreciate the comments from the city manager that staff are pretty nice. It was lean back in the days I was here, it's leaner now. And there's only so far you can go at being lean, to when you start cutting back on the services and you start cutting the bone. And I represent the city employees in National City and Chula Vista. And in both those cities, the city councils took the bold move to do the sales tax initiatives. And S C I U, you know, helps support each one of those initiatives. Help protect the services for the citizens and make sure that the budget is balanced. So I encourage you, I do not, I do not think privatizing is good. That is how you lost control of your costs with sheriffs. That's how you lost control of different, whenever you control of the cost. And that is one of the problems that happens when you do contract out. So I highly recommend do not privatize. Our members are very proud of doing the work here in the city. They're very proud of this city. And they want to make sure that it is, it kept safe. And I know you are the elected stewards of the city, and we want to partner with you in whatever way possible. So I just want to say, bold decisions are needed at times, and we will be there staying with you. But we're definitely as lean as you can go. Please don't cut any cars, don't cut the bone. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. And now, we'll just go down the road, so council member, do you?
Well, I just want to thank staff and community for all of your hard work on this. And that was such a tremendous effort, and I'm very proud of the work that you've done and your creativity to get us to a balanced budget. I've been talking to a lot of other cities and they're not in as good shape as we are, so that's really great. I am definitely, I mean, I'm going to keep my comment short because I'm sure there's really a lot of discussion about our policy growth ahead. But I would definitely be interested in exploring some of these options that we discussed today as far as revenue generation, whether that means increasing T O T or, you know, absolutely renegotiating our contract with the port. And even if it means taking hold action and increasing our sales tax. Because I think that could fund a lot of the needs that we have here in our community. I definitely would be interested in establishing a Parks and Rec program and expanding those services for our community, as well as for senior citizens. I know that's, there's something in the work for our community center that's great. But we definitely need more access to those services, so I think that's it, I'm going to shut for now.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Chris.
I'm going to sound like a parent, because I'm really, really proud of the job you guys have done. Every single one of you and all the people behind you. You make us look good on the city council, and you make our city look good. And we don't thank you enough for the work that you do. And so, the thanking we thank for sure. I think, Erica, I'm amazed at, I shouldn't be, but I am, at how well you have really expanded your discovery and your ability to pull all this information together. Of course, with tremendous staff support, none of us can do, achieve a lot without, without help. And we always have to acknowledge that. But you've done a great job representing this stuff and explaining it, both now and in the meetings that we've had, even up now. I have to agree, David Garcia's made some good, made some good points that are right at the top of my.
I know, in fact.
Right at the top of my concerns, as I expressed to you all, that as I read through all this and heard it again in summary, you're making some very clever adjustments in staffing and organization and workload distribution. And in order to compensate for the increased costs from certain sectors and the lack of revenue from certain sectors keeping up with expenses, given to those minimum, referring to sheriffs and the port respectively, and those, those are the references, the digits. We can only ask Erica and others of you to do so much. She's wearing, I don't know, three, four hats now. Plus reduce staff support, going part-time instead of full-time, if I heard right. And I'm not just speaking of her, I'm speaking of what we're doing throughout the city to thin out the staffing, taking advantage of vacancies, consolidating responsibilities, et cetera. It can only go so far. We've known for years, going back seven, eight, nine years, that our staff was performing at a productivity level that was amazing, right? And that has just continued. I think we're really, as a council, we've got to, we've got to now bite the bullet and realize, they've done everything they can do. You can't ask them to do more and to consolidate more, et cetera. The next step is going to, unless we do something on the revenue side and on the cost side, other than staffing, the next step is going to be cutting services. And nobody wants that, right? We've got to, and this is in great economic times when we're having this conversation. And when National City and Chula Vista are running deficits, structural deficits. This is in good economic times. So what's going to happen, you know, inevitably when California and the country and the globe goes through its normal cyclical downturn, what happens then? Well, we know what's happening in our community, we've had to actually have staff reductions. And so we need to have more revenue and we need to build some cushions. So I think some of these areas where we are pressing against the limits are going to have other consequences. I think building and housing inspection, we've got to maintain the ability to carefully review developer proposals at a time or density issues that are top concern. Code compliance, we've got to maintain the ability to address real light in the neighborhoods and address that quickly, or else we have more, more problems, more drugs, more crime, et cetera. We've got to be able to enforce our rules regarding short-term rentals, so that's got to come from somewhere. And we've got to maintain our beaches. We all cherish the job that's being done with respect to keeping the beaches as clean as possible. And so we have to be careful about shortfalls there and shortfalls in port funding for those services. So how do we sort of, I just want to go through a couple of bullets and then finish up in terms of what we do about this, and what I think about some of these revenue ideas and some others. First, as a general planning concept, we're looking at a two-year budget. This is not enough. We need a forecast model that takes us out about five years that projects positive revenue, positive revenue environment, medium revenue environment, poor revenue environment. Same thing on the expenditure side. Without that tool, which most communities that are as sophisticated as us, if not more so, but at least as sophisticated, have forecasting tools that's part of their budgeting process so that you can actually, as a city council, city staff, think about what your longer-term implications are of the policy decisions that we're making right now. And so I urge you all to think about how you get that kind of a forecasting model into the process. There are experts in that field who can assist there, there's software in that field that can assist there. Beyond that, clearly we need to renegotiate our contracts with the port and with the sheriff. Those are the two big ones. The port, annual increases are tied to a formula, I think we've all been briefed on this, we can talk about it very much in the presentation. The port's annual increases are geared on a formula that doesn't keep up with real costs that the port is, has agreed to cover. So there's a discrepancy there. I understand that those discussions are already started on a preliminary basis. We really need to track those and see that that is taken care of so that we continue to have port support for the things they've already committed to that keeps up the expenses. That'd be a big, a big part of this, I think. Another big part of it, Andy, you put up the sheriff's information and all of the F T Es, all the staffing that we are supporting in the sheriff's department. We really do need, before we can really negotiate, and it won't be us negotiating, it'll be you, we really do need to look at, are all those positions really necessary in order to, including the overhead lines at the bottom, will look like overhead, to deliver the kind of law enforcement boots on the ground that we need in Imperial Beach to keep our citizens safe. There, we have to, it has to be demonstrated that that level of cost and personnel translates into what we need on the ground in order to keep our community safe. We just can't assume that by making some adjustments there that we're going to reduce public safety. It may be that there are some services that are, that we're paying for, that other jurisdictions, including the unincorporated territories covered by this substation, are benefiting from. It may be that there are some overheads that we aren't really, shouldn't really be responsible.
Could you go back to that slide? It shows the cost for the other sheriffs and San Diego, so. Does that, none of the sheriffs, they're big on that?
So it's, there's, it's only part of the story. That kind of tells to me in kind of a big sense that we're not too far out of line. But it may still be possible that we can reduce our per capita cost significantly. And because this is what's driving us to squeeze, and it's driving us from our goals of having a recreation department, of having, you know, all the services that we would like in the community. This is driving it, and we have to just be blunt about it and face it. That we've got to come up with a new deal when it comes to our major expenditure item. Nothing here is, I'm not saying anything against the sheriff's services. They are very professional, outstanding service. We benefited greatly from that contract. I'm not suggesting that we not have a contract with the sheriff. But anyone who's seen this presentation can see that it is driving us to go to the bone in terms of our other services and our staffing. So we've got to obviously do something about it, we can't continue. Next thing, we need to collect all of the T O T we should be entitled to. We've talked about this before. There's a lot of illegal short-term rentals out there, and we need to make sure we're going after that. We need to have a plan to do that, and that will help at some marginal, to some marginal degree. We need to restore the earlier levels of parking and traffic enforcement revenues. This is a source of, now, these are, you know, the T O T increment, the traffic and parking revenue increment, these are not necessarily huge, but when you add them together, we may be talking about a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year, somewhere on that order of magnitude that we're leaving on the table. We need to consider what other communities have, especially if we're eventually going to go to two cannabis outlets, when you can think about taxing the sales, a special narrow sales tax on those, on those outlets, on that, those retail outlets. Regarding T O T, another point, hasn't been brought up. We need to do everything we can to move our big T O T future generators forward as quickly as we can. City, you've already been praised by developers and others in terms of the permitting process and the friendly attitude here, et cetera. But we really, you know, having said that, we still need to accelerate as much as we can bringing onstream Ivy Resorts, the Blue Wave Project, and of course, the Hampton Inn, which is already, you know, in progress, so that we get these new T O T revenue flows into our budget sooner rather than later. This also is consistent with, you know, our overall strategy reflected in the general plan and the overall postal program, of a focus, an economic strategy that focuses on our assets, tourism and ecotourism. So we've got to make sure our way of housing and supporting tourists and ecotourists get onstream quickly. Once, I think, we get these projects up and running and paying their T O T, I would suggest that then we can reestablish our recreation department, make sure our kids and seniors and everybody have the services they deserve. Perhaps financing that directly with the T O T increase. I'm suggesting that there's, we're leaving cash on the table because we haven't got these projects yet. They're not totally within our control. We haven't got them up and running to generate T O T. We haven't yet collected all the TOT that were due. And these other measures for revenue collection and contract renegotiation, these are going to help us balance the budget without a tax increase. And once we get those revenue streams in place, then we can look at a major expenditure item, sort of current expense, which is reestablishing our recreation department, which once used to cost us about $200,000 a year before we eliminated it. Then we will want that to be self-supporting or have its own revenue base as much as possible. And that's why I think a TOT tax is going to really help us with something really specific that's going to benefit the community and not improve it. One final thought. I like the idea of liquidation of assets, but only if they generate rents. You liquidate an asset and it's a one-time shot in the arm. It's a one-time revenue. It's like selling your house, selling your rent. That doesn't really help us in the long term deal with our ongoing costs. And this is what, what we have to look at is cash flow that grows over time. So if we, for example, were to lease the property that Public Works is on right now, you know, and build into a formula that escalates over time or that escalates with revenues or whatever, because it's a prime location for, you know, some kind of a, maybe cash power development. That could be, to me, a much better strategy for us to think about as a council moving forward than just selling. I'm also concerned for the same reason with selling our sewer system. You know, yeah, it's a runtime revenue and it makes it a lot. I haven't seen any numbers or any estimates to be helpful to do so. But right now, it's a self-supporting system. So it's not really costing us anything. It's an enterprise fund. So we have to think really carefully, I think, about what we, what we do with that. And I agree with Councilmember Pat's concern that privatizing sewer could eliminate our ability to control the costs.
Wait, can you say that again? Do you agree with me on that?
I agree with you a lot of time. No, I think if, once you privatize a major utility, you run into the problem that all privatized utilities have and that's if they're profit-oriented and they, and they're going to increase rates.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wrote down some notes on that and I'm actually rethinking thoughts on that. And after what you're saying in this first day, as we say as well. So, yeah, definitely thinking.
So those are my general comments. I hope we'll, we'll be able to come together and have a policy discussion where we can think about, you know, the smartest ways to renegotiate these arrangements, add to our revenue base. I feel very confident that we can do it. And I'm very confident in your abilities to take this forward and to come up with good ideas and options for the council to decide on. And I'm very confident that our community is going to support an approach that keeps our services up, protects our staff, and generates more revenue. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spriggs, Mr. West.
Okay, so now that I've been going around the cities all throughout our county and listening to all these stated city speeches, I am...
I'm so sorry. You haven't?
I haven't, I haven't. But I think the important thing is that every one of these cities have been talking about how they're, how they're running a deficit. We are one of the few cities that we are talking about. We are, we're balancing a budget. That is a huge, but it was a, but it was a, it was a major decision that this council did. It really made, thanks to the staff's recommendation to do that. I am, I am more positive than ever that that was a great move by our city. And I think it really made our city solid for years to come. I am too, as a, as an MPA, Mass. of the Public Administration, I'm really proud of you here. Erica, you've done amazing work and I am, the stuff that you have taken on has been really, really impressive. And Andy, I don't want you ever to get rid of the tree, by the way.
I don't want to introduce it.
But I have a few things that, yeah, I have a few things I don't want to talk about too. So one of the things that was brought up in our CIP, some CIPs, were the vehicle purchases. And I think that we need to start exploring ways to get free vehicles. And there's a lot of electrification of vehicles in our fleets that can, that can not necessarily cost us any money. We can actually, they'll actually give them. So I think that as we're moving forward, these are things that we need to be looking for is those incentivizing of electrification for our vehicles and for our services as well. One of the things we also talked about too was the alleys. Now, one of the, one of the things that you mentioned to us that I brought up during the last time we had a discussion about budgets was that some of these alleys don't need to be paved. And we may even look at turning those over to the public because they, they're, they were really public parts. So I hope that if that's part of it, that we can look at maybe turning those over to them so we're not absorbing another cost here. So I, I am, I'm also concerned about the sheriffs and how much, obviously, that's going to be something that, public safety is really important in our residents. We live in the safest city in, in most Southern California, so I'm really happy about that. But, you know, sheriff bodies on the ground don't always equate to public safety. I mean, there's other things, you know, keeping your city clean, you know, removing graffiti. These are ways, luckily, we don't have a major highway going through it because highways cause a lot of, a lot of crime as well. So I definitely think that looking at ways that these bodies may be a little bit too much for. So if we can look at that. And I would also look at, when you go back to, could you go back to that one slide that had the sheriff? No, you're going the other way, the other way. Okay. Oh, there you go, you got it. You know this brings out a negative, yeah, I get it. So one thing I, I would like to know what the delta is from each one. Why is, I'm going to grow $236. I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot of money when you're looking at $40 per resident. But when you add, when you multiply that by a resident, it comes up to a large number. So I'd like to know what, why theirs is $236 and why ours. So really, really get into the details of the delta. And I know you haven't, I'm only, I'm not beating you up while Andy needs on this because I know that. So I just would like to do a little bit look into it. And even Flora Beach, what's their population, like 3,000? Yeah, they're tiny. They're 304. So I'm just trying to figure out the whole. And then maybe give me some insight into, into why.
Maybe it's a little different so we can identify what, like in San Tito, you know, it's not as well as Flora, which I understand have cut back considerably, they're not doing so well. So maybe if we look at what the services San Tito gets and we can figure out how we can, you know.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking about. So, and then we talked about the Bay Shore Highway improvements. And I know the Bay Shore Highway is really important and as far as an economic engine, it's bringing people to us. It's, we got iCommute going on tomorrow and I know you guys will be out there. And when the border to Bay Shore comes in, that's the thing that we, but one of the things that I would like to bring up too is not only just paving it, but also the side maintenance of the Bay Shore Highway. You know, if we keep putting asphalt on that, it creates a little bit of a valley going down it. So I want to be sure that we are actually looking at possibly putting in, not with asphalt, but, you know, DT or something in there to keep it, keep that a nice grade between the bicycles. And then I, I really think that, I appreciate you guys did so much outreach. But I think we're, I think, I would like this to see, us do one more outreach, maybe two outreach in our communities near 13th Street. And I would like to see one on the north and the south portion of it. Maybe one over at the Bay Shore Highway and then maybe over at Joffre. So I just, I feel a lot of times that community doesn't get their say as much as they have. So I'd really like to see a couple more outreaches for this prior to our June 6th. And I agree with you, you know, I brought this up, the last time we talked about this, a forecast for five years. I think that's really important. There are some good programs out there that can do that, so I would like to see that. I, I think our year work and everybody, you are doing a great job. Everybody's spinning multiple plates to make sure that you're getting the services done for our city. But I think this all goes back to revenue generation. We have got to figure out ways to, to generate more revenue. And I, we, I think this entire council has agreed at least one once to raise TOT. I, I think we need to go to 14%. Match city of San Diego, I don't, I don't think, no one would even notice that. I think that that's the threshold, go from 10% to 14%. I think, the public works yard. Andy, I have mentioned this to you before, so there are intergovernment service agreements between the Navy and cities. And I would bring, there's a one that's actually done between Seal Beach and the Navy that they actually put a public, they put a swimming pool on the Navy, Navy base and, and it's got a, the services get to use it and the community gets to use it. And they built that through the Navy. So I'd like to see us really look at that intergovernment service agreement so we can get the public works yard moved over to the Allied Field. And that's, I mean, that, the road there is kind of designed to go that way. So I think it's a perfect, and I think we have to be, we have to be, we have to be realistic. The, we are going to see a lot of development that's going to happen in Palm Avenue. It's underdeveloped and it's probably the most underdeveloped road in all of San Diego County. And I think if we, we need to get ahead of that to make sure that we are increasing the sales tax. I, I think a 1% increase, because it's, sure, that's, some of us are, some of us are, it will be a community, but that's actually, that's actually paid for by part of our people who are coming through here. And on Palm Avenue, that's a lot of people that are not here, these residents, that are paying for that. So I think that that's, I want to see recreational services improved, obviously. I think we talk about it all the time. It started with the, thank God Councilmember Patton started the Junior Lacrosse. Probably one of the greatest programs up and down Southern California. I mean, you, it was, it's amazing. I think, I think that let's look at some unique ways to go about doing this. Like, I think it's time to really look at our other cities and bring us all together and share the costs, share the community, move forward. So, because they want to come to our beach and spend time and we can offer services to their community.
Yeah, they're marked for the trick.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that these are all the things. And don't get rid of the tree.
Yeah, you know, listening to my colleague's up here is amazing here, putting all these different heads put together. And I hope you see it too in the audience. So a couple of things I mentioned, you know, when I talked about the sewer, like, maybe we should get rid of it. I didn't think about the people that work at the sewer and it's something I never want to do. So I'm taking that one off the shelf personally. I mentioned that earlier. Mr. Spriggs, the positive cash flow idea on Public Works Plan, that was brilliant. I mean, just keeping that money in, that's an awesome idea. Another thing I was thinking about was a neighborhood wash program. And that might kind of, also, you were talking about, Mr. West, is supplementing the sheriff by, by our own policing. And I don't know what it takes to get a neighborhood wash program, but I'm sure it's doable. And I'd be happy to help out with that. And the, we, a big talk tonight was Recreation Department. And, and I know myself definitely invested in that. Even to the point that we get some sort of ad hoc committee going. Is there anybody that would do that with me?
Yes.
Who? Okay. So if that's an option, I think we could really start looking into this deeper and then just get some options, you know. And then finally, and Mr. West stole my thunder here, because I like your tree too. And I even drew a little picture of a tree. And one thing on the tree I'd really love to see, I saw the swimming pool, but also in our CIP somehow finding dollars for the skate park for that phase two. That's something I don't think has been talked about tonight.
It's on the tree.
Oh, was it on the tree? Okay, I missed it. And then for revenue generation, I think we could maybe get some t-shirts made of the tree. And sell those and then, you know, we could have extra money, put it towards the junior life program. Other than that, that's, that's all I have. Thanks for letting me go for round two.
Thanks, everybody, for all the comments. Erica, could you Google an image of our TAT program? Is there a way to do that? Because I want to replace the tree with actually the investment. Well, is there a way you can, can you find Google? Yeah, I'm sure you can Google. Oh, Paul, you want to go, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, we talked about revenue generation and some areas of need where we, I hate to, I hate to talk about like spending money before we even generate the money, but I mean, this is what the discussion is about. And I, I would love to see us, I mean, I don't know what it would look like if it were being, adding an FTE or a part-timer, but somewhere in the mix, I think that we have a real need when it comes to renters and, and their rights and, and how they access information when, when they are being subjected to, you know, I guess, rent abuse or malpractice or whatnot. So I would like to see us explore the idea of having someone on staff that not only could function as an additional code enforcer to make sure that some of these properties that are rental properties are in good condition since they are, you know, constantly increasing rent costs, you know, with the justification that they are based on market rate. Well, let's make sure that the quality of those rental units are on par and that, and that if they're, like I said, if there's some sort of, you know, malpractice or whatever, that they have access to the necessary information, that they can have someone at the city that they can approach. They, what do I do about this or what do I do about that? You know, if there's an eviction notice or if there's some sort of code violation, that they can have someone on staff that could look into that. I mean, yeah, that could be it too, but I want us to get serious about it beyond, you know. And that's just my suggestion, my opinion, but I would like for us to get serious about that because again, I know I'm eating a drum, but more than half of our population are renters, right? So we want to make sure that we provide services to them.
Yeah, even if we didn't have a full, long housing authority, it's true, it hasn't had a catch or something.
It'd be nice to see when AV 1636 is the, is the red control and that's a new building that's coming down the bike that definitely has some of that in it.
Can we access the internet?
Yeah, they've almost got it here. In fact, maybe, well, don't pull that up because I know that some of your comments are probably associated with that. Let me, I just want to answer a couple of things or at least let you know a couple of things. So as you know, both the things we've been talking about revenue, we also have to be realistic. We won't probably see any new revenue sources in this budget cycle. Only because, remember that the county of San Diego has a moratorium on any elections until, basically, 2020 and probably fall of 2020. If you do attach, you usually have to do it after the general election. So that's probably going to end this budget cycle, but it's now that we have to start planning for that. It takes a long time.
No, just keep with the intention of, I was all trying to show, why are we buying a city? So, yeah, no, I, so first of all, thank you to the staff and our council and, you know, for putting this together, balanced budget, really impressive work, a real transparent budget. This is sea change in the way that I think budget measures need to be presented, the outreach initiative. And we're really trying to get people to understand what we do. And so that's great. I feel, I think all of us who've grown up here and been here a long time, we saw the light at the end of the tunnel for a few, last few years. We're getting a lot of things done, a lot of the extras that our community didn't take for granted. And the reason I want to get a picture of the kids is, you know, I love the tree, but we didn't get elected to feed the tree. We got elected to make sure those kids have the best quality of life. And the reality is, for the last few years, we, you know, we did all the little things that we had promised for so long. The dog park, you know, we put the outdoor gym in, put a skateboard ramp up. We talked about a swimming pool. We got a new library, you know, thanks to the county. We're talking about a new senior center, which hopefully will be a integrated community center. And so I think the thing for me is that, the reality is, if we're going to be selling the community on, why are we going to increase the TOT? It should be 15% and 16%. Why do we want to have a public safety sales tax initiative? Why do we want to get rid of our public works yard and put it somewhere else? And possibly move City Hall to the other building we own, which is the empty building on Palm Avenue and Second. It's sitting there rotting, basically, that might get much more room than this City Hall and it's not as, doesn't have toxic carpet. It's funny, but it's not. It really indicates to me that we have, the expectations that we have in this community are so low for our are so low for our residents. Coronado essentially, and that extra, it just shows, highlights the increasing problems inequality. Coronado papers the win of every resident. Like they have, you know, I'm jealous, you know, the, the senior center, the lawn bowling facility, they got federal money for, um, their pool, they've got state money for, um, there's, you know, all their summer programs, et cetera. Um, the library, uh, the two swimming pools, um, all that. And so I think that's, I just want to make sure that's clear when we go out and sell our big moves that we're doing it so we understand that, and make sure that every kid and every family in I V has access to super high-quality life. Fifty-five percent of the, of households in I V are low income. A third of our teens live in poverty. And so there's that disconnect between the people that come to our council meetings that are generally doing pretty well and then the people we never see that live north of Palm, that live east of I V, that are really struggling with the health, just health issues, people are really unhealthy. Um, and, and we want to make sure that every one of those kids, every one of those families has access to a parks and rec program, swim free swim lessons, that, and new swimming pool. And more importantly, something we promised them is that a skate park. So I'd love to see that C I P budget restructured so it's full funding for the skate park. And if we could, I don't know if we have all the money designated, the alleys can wait. We have thirty kids here, those kids came, we talked about skate park. If we're going to readjust the budget and, and C I P, that has to be a priority. This council has made that skate park a priority. And to me, it has to, that C I P budget has to show investment in the people we just don't talk about, not to, our kids who are living on the edge. And that skate park is so, um, vastly used. It's, you know, the most heavily used public, and then maybe however, the city, the regional library and the senior center. So that's, that's really important. So I think that was a big thing. I think if we can look at the sheriff's menu so we get it and measure it, maybe with San Key, just to see what that does, I think that would be helpful. Um, and then, yeah, big, big fan of getting rid of public works, like I said. Um, and then, um, I think that was the only, that's the last thing, I think it was it. So, yeah, so big picture, why are we doing this? It's kids and families, right, and earning a high quality of life. Um, and number two, let's start moving on the, uh, on the ways to generate revenue. I love, I love the idea of a public safety sales tax. You know, the reality is, we've got people on staff, firefighters, our sheriffs and lifeguards, put their lives at risk every day. And we need to make sure that they're, that they feel supported and protected and, and we need to make sure that our residents understand that costs money and more importantly, that our residents, like what we have given up in the city and what we don't expect, you know, and it's just, how many cities don't have that? Are we the only city without parks and rec program? I think we are, we may be. You know, I mean, it's, we should, actually, that'd be the next time, look at how much cities per capita spend on the parks and rec program and how much we spend.
Well, there, we get the ad hoc committee going, that's something we, we would do, for sure.
So anyway, um, this is all to say is thank you all so much for the, the multiple hats you're wearing. It is, it's sustainable. We need to get ahead of the curve. Um, it's, it's like all of our families, you think you're moving forward and you're like, you just, you just, right? And so that's, that's the story of I V. But, uh, I think it's time for the bold moves and bold vision, but more importantly, if we're to do that, we have to settle about why we're doing it and what's our vision. It's free swim lessons for the kid, more vista, I mean, for the kid in the community, right? It's that swimming pool, it's a new recreation center. It's, it's, it's all those things that we don't have now and that we started to get. And that's what, that's what's made the city credible, right, is that we made that investment in making this up.
Each one of those public, each one of those public safety, each one of them, I say, S A U, they passed pretty easily, didn't it? Wasn't, wasn't that?
And we need the support from, you know, our friends in the, in the, in the, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I agree. I know Erica has a couple of things that she wants to wrap up with, the schedule, what's next when some of those things leave. But I agree, it has to be with all about why we're doing this. I think that that's really important. Sometimes you get lost and I know I've been lost in the last several weeks in the budget and just trying to make sure that this number takes that number and make sure that the end of all is here. And I forget why I'm even doing that. And I'm doing that for the same reasons, you know? So I think if we're going to go out and ask, this is my own, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, you know, maybe it's been through a lot of these as well. I think if you go out and ask your residents for revenue increases, you have to show that you can balance the budget to begin with. I know this was painful. I know it's painful for all the people sitting here. They, they, it wasn't easy to balance the budget. I don't think you can go out and ask for more money than you're spending more than you have. I think the key, that's why I thought it was so important for us to balance this budget if we did go out and ask for more money, that we show that we are being prudent with the money we have. And I think that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Re-fully my comment, we're doing all this and taking leadership for our federal government on dealing with water quality and so that's the other multiple hat. Every member of this council is wearing, every, as a staff members, everyone's involved in that. It takes a lot of work from our lifeguards, our public works department, all our staff. And, uh, and so that's an extra tax on us. You know, the estimate of the lost property revenues, property tax revenues of sixty-seven million dollars over the last ten years on revenues we've lost because of water quality problems. So, you know, if we can fix that, imagine much, how much more time we can spend on improving the city, so.
Mayor Collins, I'm just, um, our timeline of events here, you know, anticipated to have this budget workshop today and our, um, public hearing on June fifth with the consideration of adopting what we presented to you. What's that?
Oh, Ethan?
She sat down, I love that down.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, yeah, we will look at, I would try a couple.
Got it. So between now and before June fifth, more outreach.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, we can still stay in, in timeline. We do gotta file a budget to stay by June three.
Maybe a T O P, uh, part.
And then finally, um, the presentation will be available on our website for the community. I know there was an express, it was hired, uh, open, air open house, but we were, um, developing, you know, for, for Tuesday.
You might be glad for you to see it before we put it on the web.
Any additional comments from the public? Thanks for, everybody for hanging out. This is the meat potatoes of the local government. Any other comments?